We are minus one minute. We now call the meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able. We're going to have an invocation from our friend, the chaplain, Mr. Buford, from the Air National Guard. I am very excited to have him here today. Not only are we having a celebration for military personnel that has done outstanding work, but Captain Major Joshua Buford has been serving since 2013 here in Topeka in the Guard. And I am very proud to share that that is my wing, our wing, the Wing of Topeka, as I was just recently inducted as their honorary commander for the base on Saturday. Beautiful moment. So I'm very proud to have you here representing our wing. And if you could please come when asked. Major Buford, what he wanted me to talk about, they gave me a hard time to say something about his mustache. And he didn't know if I was going to follow protocol and be formal. I guess he didn't know who he was working with. So please, Major Buford, if you could just join us and lead us in prayer.
Yes, ma'am. Invite you to join me in prayer. Let's pray. Words we gathered here this evening, we want to thank you for the service members. We will recognize an award. And for all those that have supported them, thank you for their dedication, selfless service, and for all the ways they have contributed and sought to further benefit their organizations and the people around them. Lastly, we want to take this time to thank you for our freedom, for we know that it is not free, yet comes at a great price. And so we ask that you will continue to protect our nation and grant our service members, first responders, and governmental leaders your wisdom as we go about the work set before us. It is in your name that I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If our friends for Constitution Week could join me. Today's gonna be a party day. I'm warning all of you. We have a whole bunch of proclamations and celebrations and a whole bunch of guests here today. I wish that every single day we had all the citizens as engaged as we do that are here to support and learn about the city council. I know that's not the case, but we could always dream that this is always gonna be like this, because our stuff is scintillating, isn't it? So to begin, we will read the proclamation that states that whereas September 17, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention, and it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebration that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing each year of a proclamation by the President of the United States of America designating the week of September 17 to 23 as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 to the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week. Could you say a few words?
Thank you so much. We appreciate this. As Topeka Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, we support our veterans, we support our active military, and our Constitution and our community, and we thank you for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you all for keeping this legacy alive. Thank you very much. The next presentation that we have is to our AmeriCorps group. If you guys can all come up. So I'm very excited to have the, what we would call the culmination or the till later, because I would hope that all of them have felt happy in this community and engaged and feel like Topeka is going to be a potential next home. But we had these young individuals recognized when they first came to our community, and they have done several amounts of, several hours of community work for your city. And I would like to have, before I read the certificate that each of them is going to receive, I would love to have Monique Lade speak a little bit about their experience here in our community. And I will ask some of you also to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have definitely been very fortunate to have the AmeriCorps NCCC Sun Five team. They joined us on July the 13th. They are leaving us on September the 12th, which will be this Friday, or actually on the 13th. Our last day with them will be on the 12th. They have worked with a number of our community partners. If I could ask them to stand, please. So they have been gracious enough to help the Topeka-Shawnee County Public Library, the Topeka Housing Authority, the VA Eastern Kansas Health Center, the Boys and Girls Club, TARC, and also Shawnee County Parks and Recreation. They have Red to Children. They have helped seniors complete Red Files, Operation Red Files. They have helped with the trails. They've done an enormous amount of time put into our community, and so we are very gracious that you spent some time with us here in Topeka. And we look forward to all of you becoming Topekans in the very near future.
Yes, please, let's say thank you to them. So I'm gonna put you guys on the spot. So if you were to tell people that are watching that are not from Topeka, what do you think of Topeka and what are your parting thoughts? Who would like to say a few words? Oh, you opened up your mouth.
Well, my name is Jalen. And so while being here in Topeka, when I first got here, it reminded me of home, because I'm from Toledo, Ohio, so it has that real deep entrenched Midwest feel, you know? So it felt like home. And as time went on, I fell in love with your city, because your people are so hospitable and warm and friendly. And it really touched my heart, because I'm away from family, right? And in essence, you guys became my family. And it was warm, and I look forward to coming back to your city and watching your city grow.
Thank you. Who else wants to say something? Come on, one of the ladies?
My name is Haley, and I have had the privilege of being the team leader for our Sun Five AmeriCorps team. It has been such a privilege to be able to serve alongside all of you and to collaborate with all these organizations here in Topeka. When we first got here, we weren't too sure what to expect. We were working with a wide array of organizations, a wide array of age groups, but it's truly gonna be so sad to depart, but we know similarly to what Jalen said, it had a lifelong impact on all of us. We've been able to grow a lot in our soft skills. We've been able to grow a lot in our own personal developmental skills, and we truly appreciate everything that you all are doing in this community, and we can't wait to see what happens next after we depart.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to extend our appreciation for your invaluable efforts extended to our community while serving as a member of the AmeriCorps NCCC Sun Five team for the last 90 days. The contributions you provided while working within the City of Topeka Shawnee County Public Library, the VA Eastern Health Center, Shawnee County Parks and Recreation, the Boys and Girls Club of Topeka, and the Topeka Housing Authority added value and enhanced the quality of life for countless neighbors. The compassion you have shown to the people we serve is an inspiration to us all. You are inspiring. If the world becomes a better place tomorrow, it'll happen because of people like you. On behalf of the City of Topeka, our council, and our citizens, we want to say a heartfelt thank you for your service. This, I have to say that by far is probably one of my favorite nights of the year of being a mayor, because I think that a lot of times we recognize wonderful individuals that come and volunteer in our community. We recognize the individuals that come and go, but I don't think that as a community, we often celebrate the merits of the people that live right here, the families that are right here in our community, who sacrifice their loved ones when they go out to protect our freedoms. And what a salient day, the day before 9/11, that we get a chance to just stop for a second and recognize individuals that are here because they are willing to give their last full measure of devotion for this country and for each of us. So I will start calling individuals. If, Dave, if you could join me, and Curtis? You wanna say a few words before we begin?
That's fine. You did too good a job.
So all of these individuals have been recognized by their groups, because they are exemplary. All of them typically go above and beyond, but the individuals here have been recognized by their peers because of their exemplary service. So I'm gonna start. Okay, all right. So if Master Sergeant Beverly Claycamp could please join me. Master Sergeant Beverly Claycamp. Claycamp was raised in Seneca, Kansas, and graduated Nima Valley High School. She joined in 1988. The Kansas Army National Guard is an administrative specialist for the 714th Maintenance Company based in Topeka. Nationally, Claycamp is recognized by peer state institution programs as a top subject matter expert for all education incentives, whether they are for Veteran Affairs, Kansas Legislative, or the private sector. In addition to working with extended hours and time to ensure soldier success, Claycamp continues to be involved in her local church. She is a community volunteer with programs such as Harvesters. She has participated in Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Topeka, volunteering her time to read and mentor young girls attending middle schools here in Topeka. She also finds time to be a work investor, advertiser, advisor representative with the office here in Topeka. And as you can see, our military personnel are not just here to serve their units, they are here to invest in our community. And the fact that you are investing in our children is so important. It is so important. So I just wanna say, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the Greater Topeka Partnership, thank you. And Curtis, do you wanna say a few words?
We are deeply grateful to you and all of your colleagues here for your service, and just want you to know that Topeka very much appreciates what you do for our community and our nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. These awards are done by partnership. As you can see, this man, Mr. Fisher, has been with us helping for so many years to ensure that we are recognizing our veterans. And the Greater Topeka Partnership through our military relations organization that was started in great part because we have several individuals in our community that are part of our military forces that we were not connecting with. And one of the things that we are striving to do as a community is not only being a community that celebrates our individuals when they are in service, but when you retire or when you decide that you're gonna come back into the workforce, we wanna make sure that we are here to support you. And this is how a lot of this has begun. And I wanna thank you as we go to the next one, because you have been...
I've been doing it since 1982.
Wow. Many years. Next person up is Sergeant First Class Larry Bukacek. I hope I said it right, and I think I did not. It's okay, you could butcher De La Isla whenever you want. Born in 1971 in Enid, Oklahoma, Sergeant First Class Larry...
Bukacek.
Bukacek. Sounds much better when you say it. Enlisted in the United States Army in January of 2000 and attended basic training in Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and advanced individual training as an automated logistics specialist. He is currently a motor transport operator. His military awards and decorations include Meritorious Service Award, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Good Conduct Medal, Army Reserve Component Achievement Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Presidential Unit Citation, Valors Unit Award, NCO Professional Development Ribbon, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, the Army Reserve Component Overseas Training Ribbon. Wow, these are long. Armed Forces Reserve Medal with M device, Iraq Campaign Medal, and the Army Driver's Badge. And you know what? Those names are long, because they mean something. And this just shows the caliber of individuals that we have in our community. I wanna personally, again, on behalf of the city council, on behalf of our residents, on behalf of our city, thank you for your service. Next person to be recognized is Staff Sergeant Anthony Miller, United States Marine Corps. Staff Sergeant Anthony Miller was born in Cherokee, Iowa, on January 3, 1985. He enlisted into the United States Marine Corps September 13, 2004. Miller's assignments have included Second Ammunition Company, Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, Marine Corps Security Forces Training Company, Chesapeake, Virginia, First Ammunition Company, Camp Pendleton, California, and Weapons Training Battalion, Quantico, Virginia. During his 14 years in the United States Marine Corps, Miller has served his community in many different capacities. Here in Kansas, from January 2018 to December 2018, Miller devoted more than 500 hours as a youth softball manager for the 8U Topeka Angels, as an assistant baseball coach for the 14U Topeka Shockers, and 7U Pirates, and also served as a board member at the Southeast Youth Athletic Association. During this period, he made a direct impact on many young men and women associated with these activities. He assisted with the Toys for Tots program in showing over 35,000 toys were collected, sorted, and distributed to more than 15,000 children. He also volunteered to be a guest speaker for Indian Hills Elementary School Day Assembly. His contributions have greatly affected the Topeka community. Thank you for your service. Yeoman Third Class Nathaniel M. Batun from the United States Coast Guard. I had the chance this morning to be at the Coast Guard offices and talked a little bit about diversity and inclusion, and it was great, because by the interaction and with the interaction with their commander, when he walked in, the first thing he did was give me a hug. And I'm like, oh my God, en familia, this is awesome. Petty Officer Batun grew up in Los Angeles, California. He enlisted in the Coast Guard in 2013, and after completing basic training in Camp May, New Jersey, he began his career abroad. The U.S. Coast Guard Cutter Alert in Warrenton, Oregon, where he was routinely involved in maritime law enforcement, aids to navigation, migrant and drug interdiction. In 2016, upon completing the Yeoman A. School in Petaluma, California, he was assigned to the Coast Guard Pay and Personnel Center in Topeka. Batun took great pride and effort in his role as a key member of the PPC's Color Guard Team by ceremoniously attending community parades, supporting events, naturalization ceremonies, and providing military funeral honors to numerous fallen shipmates within the 8 Coast Guard District. Batun demonstrates an unwavering commitment to service to the Topeka community. He volunteers in many Topeka community initiatives, including the Partnership in Education Program at Loman Hill Elementary School, where he tutors kindergarten students weekly. Batun also volunteered his time to Meals on Wheels and Harvesters, assisting to feed those in the community in need. His selfless commitment to his community has had a positive and lasting effect on the quality of life of many Topeka residents. His character portrays an excellent example of the Coast Guard's core values of honor, respect, and devotion to duty. Thank you for your service. As a side note, when his commanding officer was leaving the room, he turns to me and he says, you know that one employee that no matter how hard, or how bad, or how just difficult the job is, and you tell them, hey, here, do this? And I'm like, yeah, that's trade for me. And he's like, that's him, always with a smile, no matter what. Thank you. Last but certainly not least, Chief Master Sergeant Ron Rint from the Kansas Air National Guard. Chief Master Sergeant Ron Rint oversees aircraft production and ensures effective management of resources required to meet the daily flying schedules at the 190th air refueling wing. That's our coyotes. As Aircraft Maintenance Squadron Superintendent, Rint has overseen the wing's newly acquired two-line alert mission during a two-year runway repair that required the aircraft to be located at a geographically separate location of more than 100 miles. During that period, he experienced balanced mission requirements and airmen morale. He balanced mission requirements and airmen morale, as the airmen were required to travel more than 200 miles round trips three days a week. From June to October 2018, the wing modeled all-flying operations to Salina during the runway construction. Rint was the maintenance action officer in charge of standing up, executing, and reconstructing maintenance operations for a 12 aircraft wing geographically separated location. Thanks to his efforts, the wing craft was able to move and reconstruct it more than 50 pieces of equipment between Forbes Field and Salina. In addition to his volunteerism activities with the Kansas Air National Guard, his contributions to the support of service members, Rint is an active member in his community of Dover. He plans and executes several fundraisers for the Dover Community Center, and hosts events, and he hosts also his public website. He also is active with the Native Plant Society and has hosted an educational seminar on his homestead that provides scientists and enthusiasts the opportunity to examine plants, Kansas plants, in their natural environment. On behalf of our city, on behalf of the council members, on behalf of our community, thank you for being exemplary citizen. Thank you. Since we are celebrating personnel and our guests here in the room, if Troop 11 could please rise from the Boy Scouts, so that you could be recognized. They are here to earn two badges. One of them is communications. I kindly told one of their leaders that maybe I should bring them up front, and they should communicate with us, so that they could really earn their badge. But considering the time that we have taken this morning, this evening, to do the events, we just wanna say thank you for being here, and for being interested, and for this being one of the routes for you to get a badge. It's very important that you're civically engaged, and we appreciate your presence. Now on to the really fun stuff. The next thing is a presentation by the Public Works Quarterly Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, our city engineer, Brian Faust, will give us a presentation update for this quarter. Brian, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to highlight many of our ongoing activities within our Public Works Department. There are a significant number of capital improvement and maintenance projects going on across the city of Topeka in 2019. These projects cover the four components of our pavement management plan, that is from pavement preservation, to major rehabilitation, to reconstruction, and to stopgap measures. There are two projects where stopgap measures are critical until reconstruction occurs in the future. The first one I wanna highlight is Southwest 17th Street between McVicker and Fairlon. This is a future countywide sales tax project, but it's not slated to start until 2023. But both the east and westbound lanes had significant failures, so much so that people were actually straddling the center line and driving in the center lane to avoid the failures. The stopgap measures included localized full-depth repairs, and then a partial width mill in the through lanes. The center lane was actually determined to be in satisfactory condition, and so no repairs were done. The second one I wanna highlight, and we do receive a lot of calls, Southwest 29th, basically between Fairlon and Wanamaker. I show here Arrowhead and Wanamaker. That project is programmed for 2027, and if you've been on that road, you'll understand there's no way it's gonna make it to 2027. There's a lot of issues with that project, but the main one is those failures in the joint line that runs down the inside lanes, both east and westbound. And so we're looking at doing a stopgap program there this fall to improve that one condition. We're not gonna improve the whole road, and it's likely before 2027, we'll have to do something again, but this is a measure that'll make it much more drivable going into the winter months. I talked about our pavement management strategy. We have a number of projects that involve rehabilitation. The first one here I actually completed last week. This is Southwest Burlingame from 29th through 37th Street. That was a mill and overlay project. And the next one is Southwest Fairlon from 28th to 29th at Wheatfield Village. This project, while turning lanes were added as part of the development, there were a lot of problems with the existing road. And so as part of that project, we did localized repairs, and then an edge mill, and then an This is started last December. This is the northbound lanes of the Kansas Avenue Bridge. The fire that occurred in the homeless camp last December rendered this span useless. Repairs are well underway. You can see by the photograph, the deck and the beams have been removed. And if you've happened to been out there, there's a lot of repairwork going on just north of the bridge. We felt this was our opportunity, with this bridge closed, to do pavement repairs north of the bridge. So that's what's occurring right now. And there will be one change when it's reopened. We are changing the median configuration north of the bridge, so people driving northbound will actually be able to turn left into Noto. All other turning restrictions will remain in place, but northbound into Noto will be In this northwest veil, this is a complete reconstruction program. This project was completed about halfway through August, and it was a complete reconstruction northwest veil from roughly Highway 24 down through Lower Silver Lake Road. Another reconstruction, this was a joint project with Shawnee County. Gary Ormsby Road between Highway 75 and Innovation Parkway, tremendous truck traffic in that area. Road had just completely disintegrated over time, and it was a unique project, because we actually did cement-treated subgrade, which allowed us to reduce the asphalt thickness on the road to save the city money. And this is a continuation from the 2018 project. This is Southeast Adams from 33rd to 37th. In 2018, we did from 29th to 33rd, again, complete reconstruction. In addition to our stopgap measures, in addition to rehabilitation and reconstruction, it's really important to preserve the good payments that we have now. We'd like to say keep the good roads good. So this is year two of our pavement preservation program using excess countywide sales tax money. In 2019, we are concentrating our efforts on the east side of Topeka. This picture here is of Southeast Adams, fresh macroservice along with fresh striping. In 2019, we will do over 100 lane miles of roadway. We also get some interesting projects. This is a pedestrian bridge being delivered for the Quinton Heights SWP program. This is a pedestrian bridge over the Shunga Creek. As of last Friday, it was still sitting in a parking lot. Contractor needs five dry days to set the bridge, and hopefully, at some point in time, we'll have that. We do have a number of projects in design... We do have a number of projects in design. First one is Southwest 10th Street from Fairlon to Wanamaker. This is a big reconstruction project starting in 2019, excuse me, 2020. And from the picture, you can see it's a two-lane, we call it a two-lane rural section. No curbs, open ditches. It's been there forever. When this project is done, it will be a three-lane urban section enclosed storm sewers, curb and gutter. There will be a five-foot sidewalk on the south side and a 10-foot shared use path on the north side. If you look at 10th Street from Gage to Fairlon, that's what this is going to look like. It projected to take two years to construct. The other big project in design is Southwest 12th from Kansas to Gage, and this is our first project where we are using our complete streets' design guidelines to help with the design of the project. Our Internal Services Group includes our fleet, facilities, parking, and TSG. We are continuing the renovation of Fire Station 3 and continuing to address maintenance needs across the city, including a number of HVAC repairs. Parking did install updated garage systems, which include new entry and exit bars. And our ABL project went live with 105 vehicles across the city. And what that system does, it provides accurate locations for our equipment as well as additional information, such as plows up, plows down, if our lights are engaged, if we're speeding, harsh break, and those types of conditions are all recorded. And there's a picture of our upgraded garage systems, as well as one of our new fire trucks with our ABL system. As part of our stop-gap and pavement preservation measures, our Street Operations Division has cracked sealed over 66,000 water feet of pavement in the second quarter alone. They swept over 2,200 lane miles and filled over 12,000 potholes. In addition, those crews have been extremely instrumental in our micro-surfacing program. Part of the micro-surfacing program is crack sealing prior to the microsurface, but in a lot of neighborhoods, we actually have very large cracks. And those are something a crack sealing contractor couldn't do. And we've had real good success with our Operations Department actually milling out those cracks, filling them and compacting asphalt back in, and then micro-surfacing over them. There are three separate neighborhoods where we did that. This shit worked really well. Another big project that they actually completed early this year was Southwest 29th, just east of Kansas Avenue. They actually milled and overlaid that lane themselves. Budget summary for 2019 totaled $27 million, and that's basically out of four funds: general obligation bond, federal fund exchange, and both city and countywide sales tax. And before I get to questions, I do want to say one thing. I want to thank our Assistant City Engineer, Mr. Jeff Hunt, for all his efforts over the past 20-plus years. Jeff recently accepted a position with Shawnee County, and he will be greatly missed by the city in engineering. With that, I'm open for questions.
What a way to open up the questions. Any questions from the governing body or comments? Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Faust, I've had the honor, I guess, of working with all your engineers and stuff for the past 30 years, and I am always amazed at the amount of projects your individual engineers handled at any one time. It seems to me far and above what a normal engineer in private practice might do, so I really appreciate that. And yeah, Mr. Hunt will definitely be missed. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Councilman Mait.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question on -- you had a photo of 29th and Fairlon looking north. However, if you look east and west on that intersection, it's certainly not complete. And I know that it appeared that it was about to be done, and just seems like maybe two, three weeks ago, the curb on the westbound lanes was just recently ripped out. Is that a city project? I know that there is the KDOT project, but that was more on McClure.
Actually, there's two projects on 29th Street. The first project is associated with the Wheatfield Development, and that's what you're seeing there at the northeast corner of the 29th and Fairlon intersection. What we had there is we actually did remove the curb to install additional storm sewers, and we found a very large AT&amp;T duck bank in the way.
Okay.
And so it was one of those ones that we were assured utilities were relocated. And when we discovered the duck bank, even AT&amp;T said it wasn't theirs. So we were trying to find out who was. They finally owned up it was actually theirs. We actually have a solution. We're actually putting inlet back, offsetting an inlet, and so we're back to work.
Okay. One more question, if I could. You'd also mentioned the transverse cracks. I know in my district, we've got probably three or four neighborhoods in particular that have really bad transverse cracks. I mean, like every 20 or 30 feet, there's one throughout the entire neighborhood. Is this something that you guys come back and check on year after year? I know the neighbors will do the C Click Fix, but typically, it's just isolated to the one right in front of their house on the GIS system, or how do you guys deal with those?
Actually, we're getting away from just dealing with one individually, crossing one, going to the C Click Fix, and then skipping two more. We're trying to actually, when we do an area, take care of all the problems within that area. We really started this in earnest last year, milling down those big transverse cracks, and had success with it last year. This program is really fairly new to us, but our hope is to, you know, go through a neighborhood and do them all. And so I would continue to encourage people to do the C Click Fixes, so we have those unwritten.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman Heller, to be followed by Councilman Jensen.
And then Councilman Ortiz as well. I just wanted to thank you. In the midst of this being the really busy construction season, I'm sure I'm not the only councilperson who has first coached her people to do C Click Fix and then followed up with them or gotten the follow-up, or has been directly asked, well, what about this program and what about that in our neighborhoods? And between you and Jackie in particular, sometimes they all have just sort of stacked up and tumbled over each other for me, but I really appreciate the fact that you do get on them, give us some clear, simple, concise, straightforward answers so that we can kick them back out and hopefully all learn and prevent as many questions the next time. So, thank you.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the behalf of my constituents, we want to personally thank you for doing something about 17th Street, because it's been bad for quite some time. I'm curious, at some point, is there a plan to try and address the gravel alleys we have and get them to be something other than just loose gravel?
We do have an inventory of all the alleys within the city, what their composition is. We have bricks, concrete, asphalt, gravel, millings made up of all different things. The one thing we haven't done yet is really sit down with our Utilities Division and talk about what's actually underneath the alley. It doesn't make sense for us to go through and do extensive work on the surface when I've got a 100-year-old sewer line underneath. So it's a work in progress. We don't have the priority list set yet. I do struggle a little bit with saying we need to concrete all these alleys. It seems odd to me that my alley is better than the street in front of my house. They do take a lot of loading, and the trash trucks go through there. People park off of there. We've actually started something new within the last year, is actually doing millings, rolling them in, trying different methods to help preserve the alley and make it last a little bit longer. Last year, we did a program where we did over 30 alley approaches in the central part of Topeka, and we're actually doing something similar to that right now in Oakland. We're actually doing a lot of alley approaches and then, you know, regrading the alley later. But, so...
And one of the reasons I bring that up is it's very, very expensive to replace the chunk of alley behind your home if you have to have your sewer line replaced, and often, it may take someone several years to save up the money to get that done. And I bring that up so as you guys work through when it makes sense to put a more permanent service in an alley, if there's a way to give a constituent enough lead time to get their particular chunk of the sewer line replaced before it's concreted over, it will save them literally thousands of dollars.
Right.
So, but at the same time, I appreciate the fact you guys are working on that, because that's one of the biggest issues in some of the older parts of our city, where folks don't have a garage on the front of their house, and the alley is really their best form of parking. I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you. So coming off of I-470 on 29th Street, is that a city project or a county project?
Yeah, that's actually out there near Lake Shawnee.
No, no, no. Go back to 29th and Fairlon and then go back west.
Oh, okay. Go back west. The one right at Wheatfield Village is a city project, the one at McClure just to the west. Did you come down the ramp? I came down there the other day, and you could only take a right.
Right.
That's actually, it's a city KDOT project. It's a KDOT-led project.
What are they doing? I just don't...
They did some improvements to the ramp and then improvements to 29th right there at McClure.
Okay, okay. And while you're here, I'm going to go ahead and give you this. I was at an NIA meeting, 26th and Central Park. The alley behind Central Park, they did not finish the blacktop and the curbing. They said there's a big chunk missing. Now, I'm not savvy like Karen Heller, so I don't tell them to use C Click Fix it. I just tell them to call Sylvia Ortiz, I'm the city manager, or Mr. Henderson or somebody. But I did tell them I would report that. I don't know who accepted Jeff Hunt's resignation, but we should have never done it. He's a great guy.
He will be greatly missed.
He will be greatly missed. And when we went to the Kansas City Royals game, he was like a little kid. Him and the city manager, they were like 12-year-olds. I'd never seen any grown men act like that.
If we're able to provide feedback, first of all, I want to say thank you. The reconstruction of Burlingame was nothing more than poetic. It's almost sad that I wanted the cones to remain and the stoplight to be red, because people typically use that street as a highway, and it goes right in front of my house, and we have all these kids walking from across the street, from Lykan Foster to go to Jardine Elementary and Jardine Middle School. And it was wonderful, because we had the red lights blinking. People had to stop, and there was a cadence on where cars were going to come. We're back to the craziness, but it was fast. It was amazing. It's just like you woke up one day, the cones were there. There's another day. The milling was done. There's another day. The asphalt was laid. I mean, it was fast. There is one section, and if memory serves me right, is on 32nd Street, right in between the church and the Briarwood sign, that that sidewalk is the only non-ADA compliant sidewalk. So if you are in a wheelchair and you're traveling from 33rd Street up to 32nd, once you pass that area, in order for you to get back on the sidewalk, there is no ramp for you there. And since you guys have still people over there, I just thought I would mention that.
We have an active ADA program, and so when you do see a ramp that is, you know, not a ramp there or it's non-compliant, just let us know. We are working in the Elmhurst area right now, but we also get a lot of requests off of Sixth Street from basically where we're located in the Holiday Building across to the store and the Ramada and the bus station. Those ramps are also not ADA compliant, and so we try to knock those out when we get the complaints.
Thank you. Are there general comments or questions? Going once, going twice. Thank you for your presentation. Next presentation is Utilities Quarterly Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Braxton Coughlin will come forward and do a presentation regarding our Utilities Department for the second quarter.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you about some of our exciting utilities projects. Let's see, we've got a lot, a lot going on in the utilities. We're finishing up the West Crane Transmission Main Project. We're just getting started on the Straight project from Seward and Straight down to the Norwood Pump Station. We are doing waterline replacement as part of the Tennessee Town Sort, as well as the Chesney Park Half-Cent Sales Tax Project. And pretty much every quarter, I like to feature one water project, one wastewater project, and one stormwater project for you. And the water project that I have this time is actually not a project, but it is a computer model that we have developed with Fracta, and this is helping us to take our asset management program to the next level. The Fracta computer program, it's based on artificial intelligence, and it has three components to it. It has the likelihood of failure, the consequence of failure, and then the product of those two is a business risk evaluation. The likelihood of failure is basically taking a number of factors, including the pipe age, the pipe type, and basically, there's a degradation curve that follows along that, as well as the break history, soil corrosivity. All of that gets factored into what is the greatest likelihood of failure within our waterline system. Red is bad. Orange is the next one. Orange would be worse 10%. Yellow would be the worst 25%. And then white, blue, and blue in terms of the best 50% that we have out there. So that's the likelihood of failure, or what's the probability of a pipe segment failing. And then we have to balance that with the consequence of failure. The consequence of failure is basically, there's composed of two different areas. One are the direct costs, and that would be the cost of actually repairing the waterline. And then you have, as well as the site restoration. And then you have indirect costs, which are more gray, if you will. You have basically established a dollar amount for interference with major modes of transportation. How many people are going to be out of water? Those would be the things that basically the model has attributed a dollar of value to that to come up with the consequence of failure. And so then you take and balance your probability of failure against your consequence of failure by basically multiplying these two factors together, and that gives you your business risk exposure in terms of helping us to take and use the limited resources that we have and make smart decisions about what line segments that we want to replace. One of the side benefits of going in with Fracta was that they were able to attribute an age to all of our waterline segments. We had, at the beginning of this project, we only had age or install dates on 65% of our waterlines. They were able to use their algorithm and basically cross-reference a number of things. They would look several pipe segments up and downstream. They would look at adjoining streets. They would look at county land records in terms of when plaits were recorded, when homes started to get developed. And so if you have three segments upstream and downstream that were 1950, it was platted in 1949, and the first house was sold in 1950, and you have two segments here that don't have an age to them, pretty good guess that those were 1950, because as we install new things, we do have the install dates on that, you know, say, the last 20 years of what we've been doing. So huge benefit. This is a pretty telling graph, and if you look at this first column here, this would be as of 2020. We have 43 miles as of 2020 that are beyond the expected useful life of the pipe. Put that in perspective, my programs for 2020, '21, '22, I have $4 million a year for waterline replacement. The rough rule of them that you can use on waterline replacement is $1 million a mile. So in terms of where we are right now, we're obviously behind the power curve. We've got 43 miles of pipe out there that's beyond its useful life. This certainly is recognized by our break history. I mean, the national average is 14 breaks per 100 miles. Our average over the last 10 years is 55 breaks per 100 miles. So this just helps me to tell the story in terms of what is the condition of our water infrastructure. So we've got several projects in design. Montero Tower, we've got our waterline replacement projects. These are all high-break areas. They're all 41 to 49 breaks, all around 2,500 to 3,000 lineal feet. I hope to get those all out to bid this winter. Wastewater, busy, busy place out at the Oakland Wastewater Treatment Plant. We've got three major projects going on. We're replacing the mixers, interoxidation ditch, UV expansion. We're moving along on the... We're moving along on that biogas, solid handling. In fact, we've got the centrifuges that we're starting to bring online, doing training on those. And then we also have the Ash Street Force Main. And so if any of you have driven along River Road, you've noticed that you get to take a nice detour through part of Oakland. And that's because we've got two things going on. One is we're contractors getting staged to get moving on the Ash Street Force Main. The huge contraption on the left side of the screen is the boring head for that 60-inch carrier pipe that's going to be carrying that new 48-inch ceramic epoxy line DIP pipe that we're going to have. And then on the right-hand side, that's just a good example of how to properly bed pipe using a sheep's foot. Basically, Ash Street, just so everyone's on the same page, because they don't all have the same knowledge of Oakland. We're going from the Oakland Wastewater Treatment Plant down to the Ash Street Force Main, and then we will be boring that section underneath River Road. The other thing that's going on along River Road right at the Ash Street Pump Station is we have a significant sinkhole. This is the Chandler Interceptor, and we've had a breach on that line. And the contractor actually was out today, starting to drill the relief wells. And because this is only 50 feet from the levee, and you guys have known just how high our river has been this year, to be able to safely accomplish this work, and the Chandler Interceptor is about 25 feet deep, to be able to safely do this without trying to de-water the site, we'd have to get the river down below 10 feet. And that may happen in December, based on the Corps' projections in terms of they've allowed greater-than-usual releases out of the upstream reservoirs, and they're forecasting probably December. So, to be able to do this and do it safely, we're doing the relief wells just as a refresher, a relief well. This one is an artisanal relief well, but basically what you have is a movement of water along this foundation sand when you have high water that's being held with the levee. And what you're doing is you are giving it a safe relief point to come up so that you don't have a boil and risk losing part of your levee. In design, want to make a force main. Getting close on that. I do just want to foreshadow, there are a couple of properties that we've not been able to obtain easements, so we'll probably be coming in front of you to discuss eminent domains so we can have this project move forward. East Side Interceptor and Van Buren-Jackson Interceptor, those are both in design. Hope to get those out late this winter. Stormwater, did some whining, some lining, whining at the water treatment plant. This has been a rainy year. I call it the year of the DCP. We have had a number of requests for drainage correction projects. Again, drainage correction, adverse impacts to three or more property owners, under $1,000 project cost, and the property owners have to be willing to provide at no cost an easement. So we've got one in construction, which is 35th and Powell, and I've got four in design that I hope to at least one of them get out this fall and the rest probably put out over the winter. And this is the Ward-Martin Pump Station. We've got a gate repair. We're getting the contractor staged for that. This, you notice that the Sesame Street flannel graph, one of these things doesn't belong here. You see, this one is down, and it went down of its own volition when we were actually, had the Corps out there for testing. And so that kind of showed, yes, we needed to get in and do some rehabilitation. The problem is, these are 35-feet-long threaded travelers rods that these move on, and they are a very long lead item. No one just seems to keep these in stock. So hopefully get this contractor moving and get this done. And with that, I will definitely and gladly stand for any questions you have about our awesome utilities projects.
Any questions? Councilman Mason?
So now that I'm a parent, I'm suddenly much more interested in my grandchildren's future than I might have previously been. The middle of that graph is quite horrifying in that it looks like you're going to need somewhere in the upteen billions in 2070, 2079, something along those lines.
2060 is when that starts, and thank you for pointing that out. It is sobering.
Yes.
2060, we're looking at 140 miles.
What do we need to be doing today?
That would be 140 million there, and 2070, 185 miles.
Yes. That's a substantial amount of money that we obviously don't have. What do we need to do today so we don't bankrupt our children's future, or in my case, my grandchildren's future, or let them not have clean water?
Yes. And certainly, the answer to that is, we need to plan and provide for adequate funding to be able to handle it. And certainly, replacing 160 miles in a year is not possible in terms of the impact on that. So it's a matter of getting in and starting to replace these on a much more responsible replacement cycle and not wait till you have 55 breaks and 33,000 lineal feet of pipe.
So I assume then you'll use this business intelligence to drive a lot of the forecasting in the future, then?
Absolutely, and also to help tell the story in terms of what we need to have adequate and responsible financial strength in the utility to be able to handle these.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you.
City Manager, I just want to say thank you because when you started and I started getting more involved in smart city technology and figuring out how we were going to do predictive analytics for our infrastructure systems, this is one of the things that you and I talked about. And when I brought it up, you were saying, hey, no, we're there. We're discussing it. And it's great to see the software and how we're leaning on data, predictive data, so that we're not having 700 mains break that we don't expect. So thank you. Thank you for, this is great stuff. Ms. Councilwoman Hiller?
Along those same lines, and if you can't ask this question tonight, then sometime later when you can. Aside from analytics, when we first started the citywide half-cent sales tax program, the citizens said, are you nuts? Complete the whole street. Don't just mill and overlay it. And for crying out loud, you know that every time we fix a street, within about six months, a water main bursts underneath it. So you should fix the water mains, too. And I've, all of us, I'm sure, have explained to citizens that that's why it takes these projects three years instead of two weeks to fix the streets. The idea was that, so I have two questions out of that. One is, is that in fact working? I think it has been, but the, you know, repairing the water mains under the street project so that we do not have breaks after work has been done. Has our ratio of those breaks occurring gone down or disappeared?
Yeah, we're certainly making much better decisions, and it's been a process in terms of coordinating and looking at what our half-cent sales tax projects are and then making sure that we're making good decisions on the waterline. If it's only been in for 20 years, then no, it doesn't need to be replaced. But if it's a 100-year-old waterline, you know, let's use this opportunity. Let's go ahead and do it. So yes, the answer to the question is, it is making sense, and we are making right decisions and doing the right thing.
Correspondingly, then, with that $1 million a mile that you were talking about earlier, the idea that the citizens had, and then the staff as well, was that by doing them together, we could save a little money.
Yes.
Since it was not an emergency and since it was being done in concert with a planned project.
Correct. There's certainly benefit to the utilities if there's a street project because then the utility is not having to pay to replace the pavement. The half-cent sales tax can be tasked with doing the pavement replacement, so yes.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had a corresponding dollar per mile when we packaged them like that, but it did seem smart to me. It'd be good to know, I mean, for the planning, to know what that corresponding cost is when we have it combined with a street project.
Okay. We'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager, and then Councilman Mace.
The thing that I wanted to mention is actually, the coordination between utilities and public works is actually what kicks off our start of our capital improvement project process. It really is, because we do the comparison. They get in the room and they talk about what projects they're considering in each level and then try and coordinate that so that it's done well. And that's something that has been really strong over the last three years, making sure that those types of things are coordinated. So it's good news. And I think the other thing to mention that this particular technology, this Fracta technology, we're one of, how many are doing a pilot project with it? Two?
Yeah, East Bay Mud is one that they've told me about, which is basically the greater San Francisco area. So that's the other one that I know of, in terms of this newest permutation, which is the consequence of failure in the business risk evaluation. So they are still truly developing this model. I got to meet the owner of Fracta. He came out to Topeka, and he also went to San Francisco. And so you'll have to know Japanese to be able to enjoy the... The courbes actually, two different Japanese companies that came out here and did the filming on this. And Fracta is now marketing their software product in Japan as well, so.
Councilman Mace?
Thank you, Mayor. Braxton, if I'm not mistaken, 2018, the summer of 2018, we had like a record number of water main breaks. It doesn't seem like it's been as bad this year, at least from my perspective where I've been. Could you kind of comment on the number of, how well our summer went in terms of breaks?
Yeah. It's been a tough summer for stormwater and the levee, but all of this moisture and the reasonable temperatures are really what's caused it. I think last time I looked, we were at 270 breaks, something like that. Last year, we had a total of 870, so we're really far behind. The big driver is, of course, temperature and moisture. Because once the temperatures get up, that's putting greater demands on our system. That's also drying the soil. You have a 100-year-old pipe that's cranky. It starts to, the soil starts to shift. That causes the break. You keep the temperatures more reasonable. You also keep the soil moist. It's not moving as much. So that's, I mean, that is in a nutshell why we have it. And unfortunately, we've not been selling as much water and putting as much demand on the systems this year. We're pretty much at about 20 million a day is what we've been pushing out. A high day is like 25. You know, last summer, we were 30, 30, 30. I think 37 was our peak day. Mind you, I had 10 breaks running at the same time that day, so I had to push a lot of water out into the system, so.
Wow. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLayisa?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
President?
May?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
May now move on to the consent agenda of the clerked read.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of September 3, 2019, and there are no applications.
We have heard the consent agenda. With the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen, a second by Councilmember Cohen. Additional questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We move on to action items. Item A of the clerked read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 2046 Southwest Van Buren Street from M1 to Family Dwelling District to C4 Commercial District.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Director Finder will go through the particulars regarding this zoning change request. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body, your honor. We are presenting a zoning, a rezoning for the property, what is referred to as Martinick and Flynn at 2046 Southwest Van Buren. It's currently zoned, as you can see on the map, for two-family M1 residential. It is surrounded by the business completely on all three sides by a C4 zoning, which accommodates the business and outside storage. So this is fairly straightforward. They're proposing to rezone that. The property became available last year, 2018, and the house was demolished. And so just going through rezoning so they can expand and incorporate that property into their business. So it was a plan commission recommended unanimously to approve, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the body? What is the, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. We had, me and you had this conversation several years ago. Do you remember that? That's when they, it's been a few years. Go back to the map for me. So this, I was trying to get, this is to the west of the building, is that right?
West of the...
Of Martinick and Flynn?
Well, you have to look at the aerial. It's a little bit to the north. So the main building is here along Robey. And then the property in question is up here along Van Buren, a little bit to the northwest.
Do you remember when I called you and I said, they bought all that land and they were parking there? And somebody got upset because first they didn't want them in the street, and this street is very narrow. So they bought the property. They knocked down all of the houses and everything, and they were parking there because they have a lot of their contractors. And then the city said, we can't, you can't park there unless you pave it, right?
Right. Okay, so you're referring to, so south of Robey, across from the property in question...
That's it, right there.
It's down here, a little bit off the map there. That came in about in the mid-2000s for a CUP, conditional use permit, to do a parking lot there. It was approved, but they did not follow through on that. And over the years, yes, we've had some complaints come in that they had been being used for parking without being paved. So simply notify them that you can't be doing that, and they didn't. So it just, that's the property, I guess, when you're talking about parking, that didn't actually happen.
Okay, so will this allow that bill? Because I mean, I get so many people saying they don't want them in the street, but yet they don't want them parking on that unsurface. So either way, they are complaining, and then they're also complaining when the school bus comes through there, how narrow it is. So will this alleviate the cars in the street?
It won't directly, but it could indirectly in the sense that they now have more room on their site to park and take cars off the street. I don't know that's what they're going to do, but in theory, it certainly alleviates or could alleviate some of that issue. Quite simply, it was just, the cost was too high to do the parking lot, so that's, they dropped it.
Right.
So...
So is this a better?
This is a, this would help the situation because it would give them more property internally to park. And/or move things around so they can store or park on-site.
Okay. I just want to know, so when I get that call, you know, because they do complain that they're in the street, then they're out of the street, then the buses can't get through, you know, everything's a problem. They don't want them on the grass, but they don't want them in the street. And they have to have somewhere to park. And they purchased that property. Yeah. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on this item? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, when the time comes, I did get a call ex parte about this, and the concern was about that parking and about the lot and the various things related to the parking. In the past, we've seen, and I want you to just help me with this. We've seen zoning applications come through with stipulations on them that the petitioner has to comply with. You did not do that on this one.
Correct.
Could you just help us bridge that?
Sure. Councilwoman Hiller, if you see, the current business has C4 commercial zoning, and so they have by rights allowed to use that without really any conditions beyond what is prescribed already in the code. And there are certainly conditions, but in terms of how it looks and whatnot, yeah, there's not a lot helped there in the code. So when they have, applying for the same zoning they already have... So when they have, applying for the same zoning they already have on 80%, 85% of the site is absolutely justifiable and, and doesn't bother, you know, there's, there's no, there's no inconsistency or incompatibility with, with our, our plans and our land use principles. So in fact, if anything, this M1 zoning is a spot zoning, and that would be inconsistent with our land use principles. So this makes it whole, makes it uniform, as Councilwoman Ortiz kind of implied, or I implied, you could, it actually could alleviate a, a situation there with the parking in the future. So it is, it is a good thing. Now, from a zoning standpoint, if there are other things that are, from a property maintenance standpoint, that is something that zoning would not address.
If I can, I, I, thank you. As I read through the notes from the neighborhood meeting, and we just got the planning commission and so I appreciate that, I, I could, that's what I thought. So, but I, because I was already on council when at least the last round of what Councilwoman Ortiz is talking about occurred. And so the issue there is that the zoning, assuming we pass that, it would be appropriate, but to get them to do the parking lot, that's totally up to them, but if they, otherwise, it's, it's whoever it is, code compliance, or whoever is writing them up and constantly dealing with the cars on the street, or the cars parked on the unfinished surfaces, that would just continue. And if they do do a parking lot, there was storm sewer arrangements that would have to be made, that would come out of the permit process, as well as then, of course, the, and the setbacks and the landscaping and the quality of the surface, all comes through the permit process.
That is correct. There are conditions on that vacant piece of property south of them. As I've said before, the zoning, the conditional use permit that they got allows them to do, gives them entitlement to do it, it doesn't require them to do anything at this moment.
Thank you, thank you.
Seeing no further comments or questions, what is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion for approval in a second. Before proceeding with the vote, the body at this point in time is acting in a quasi judicial mode. Therefore, it is time for us to disclose if we have had any ex parte communication, either for or against this item. And the reason for us doing so is to ensure that we are able to make an impartial decision in this matter. So at this point in time, if anybody has any communication they would like to disclose, aside from the obvious things in the record, this is your time to do so. Seeing none, oh, Councilwoman Ortiz.
I have spoke with the business owner, business owner's parents, staff, constituents, regarding this. It's just been an ongoing conversation. And yes, I cannot, I can make a decision.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilwoman Hiller?
I had, I had my one contact and I'm, I'm fine.
Seeing no other, at this point in time, we may proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, imposing a real estate lien pursuant to KSA 12808C upon certain lots and pieces of ground in Shawnee County, Kansas, to pay the cost for utility services where such payments to the city have not been made due to neglect, failure, or refusal to pay.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On your desk, you received on the table, there was a updated ordinance that references that there are a total of 20 individuals that recently paid their delinquent bills prior to the item when it was placed in your packet. So the item placed on your table is the one that you should reference regarding which properties we will need to place a lien on, so.
Any questions on this item? Councilwoman Heath?
Thank you. First, I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Jensen. Councilwoman Ortiz, do you have comments?
I do. City Manager, I looked at this list today and I contacted three people on this list that did not know they had this out. So again, I question, how do we let them know? And my next question is, they wanted to know how long they have to come and pay it? And where do they pay it? I think me and Karen Hiller did that one year. We went through this list and, now whether it's true or not, I don't know, but, but I just want to know, how, how do we contact them, or do we just assume they know?
Mr. Goffler, will you go through the process, please?
Absolutely. Certainly, the primary means of contacting the people is we provide them with bills on a monthly basis, and if they have not paid those bills, then we move forward with the lien ordinance.
So, so, and that would be to this address? That's where we would send the bill?
No, this is the, the address of the service address. There are, there are many instances where we would have a service address, but the property owner would reside in a different address, and the bill would go to the address that they specified for where they want their bills. So if I have three rental properties
Mm-hmm.
And I want the bill sent to me at my private residence, then that would be the address that I would provide. Your, you, the next question that you had was, is there an opportunity for them to, to pay? And yes, we will accept payments up until the close of business on September 30th, because October 1st is the day that the, that we actually get with the county for doing the assessment. The, they can pay either by going downtown to the Holiday Building, to City Express, or 3683111, which is our call center, that can accept a telepayment over the phone. And then, of course, the, the city's web portal.
Okay.
Click the gov.
So you're telling me, up until this month, you have sent them an invoice, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So they should, so they should have received something with that amount, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And then you're also telling me they have until September 30th to go downtown or to do the, the portal?
Yes.
Call center portal. Do they have to say, this is, this is regarding this address, or let them know that it's on the list? I mean, so they can get it off the list, or?
Yes, ma'am. They will need to indicate which account they're paying for.
But what I'm saying is
And that they're, they want to pay this amount to keep it from being leaned, as opposed to the current bill that they may have.
Okay, okay. So they need to specify this amount so that they, and let them know that, so they can get off the list?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Great questions, thank you.
Thank you, Braxton, because, you know, I don't know what you do over there. All I know is you give me a list. You know, I didn't see Mr. Henderson on the list, but
I did. But today, today you got a shorter list than the last time, so.
We, we did. And, oh, one more, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, who is this, and you can, you could email me, the KDL Inc.
Lindemuth.
Yes, that surprised all of us, that the, KDL is, of course, the Kent Lindemuth Corporation, the holding company for a number of his properties, and we received a number of payment on the Lindemuth properties. So, well, we're not going to question a gift horse, I'm guessing that it was funds through the, because I think many of his properties are still tied up in bankruptcy.
Mm-hmm.
So I believe that they were funds from the, from the bankrupt estate through the trustee that allowed us to get a number of these properties off that have been on year after year after year.
Okay, okay. Well, I see several more people I will be calling tonight. Thank you, Braxton.
September 30th, thank you guys so much.
There's no other questions? We do have a motion in a second on the floor. Seeing no other questions or comments, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by Councilmembers Cohen, Emerson, and Jensen, setting as the Policy and Finance Committee, amending, repealing, and right organizing certain chapters and sections of the Topeka Municipal Code in Title II, administration and personnel, repealing ordinance number 16404 that adopted a personnel code, and rescinding resolution numbers 6448, 7758, 7985, 8235, and 8381 that amended the personnel code.
City Manager. Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor, I can take it. So as you recall, we discussed the subject in detail last Tuesday, the last Tuesday that we were here. And before that, the Policy and Finance Committee held eight meetings during the months of April, May, June, and July to discuss the same subject. And after hours of work, the committee unanimously recommends that the personnel-related provisions contained in Title II of the TMC be updated, that all policy-related language currently contained within the personnel code be codified by moving this language into the TMC, and that the personnel code be repealed. The committee members and staff are available to address any questions or concerns you may have, and I'd like to just ask my fellow committee members if they have any additional comments. Thanks.
Listen, seeing no other comments, but I'm asking you, is that also in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would then like to make the motion yes, ma'am.
Do we have, we have a motion by Councilwoman Cohen, and a second by Councilmember Jensen? Discussion on this item. Councilwoman Hiller?
Kudos again to the staff. I mean, seeing the final version and seeing all that was in it was just kind of overwhelming, but it's, it's awesome. When you talked to each of us, you mentioned that there were still some takeaway sections that you wanted to work on. And I recall two of them, one meaning that with the, and using some of our, our commissions, which I think is wonderful. So one was the Human Relations Commission to work on definitions for protected classes, and one was the Civil Service Commission to work on all the contents of the civil service group. I just, I wanted to check, just so we don't, we know we're not quite done, to see if there were any other things and what the timeline is for those kind of stray pieces that are still out.
Councilwoman Hiller, we have a meeting set up with Civil Service Commission already, so we're going to try to hit them a couple times a month, like we did with the Policy and Finance Committee, over the course of the next couple of months, and finish up that chapter in Title II. The other piece is the Title IX language, and I believe we are going to submit on either September 17th or the October 8th meeting, a suggestion that that be referred to the Policy and Finance Committee for study.
And, and those are the only two?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you.
Additional comments or questions on this item? Again, Chair Cohen, thank you for taking this Herculean effort on
Yeah.
In your committee, and for the staff as well, for working alongside you. Thank you so much for this. Seeing no comments or questions, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item D, if the clerk would read.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, repealing the sign code in chapters 1810, 1815, 1820, and 1825 in Division 2 of Title 18 of the Topeka Municipal Code, and establishing new sign code in Chapter 1810.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing Body, we've discussed this item and made some comments regarding changes that we would like to see in various areas. This will provide a new sign code that will bring us up into this part of what is being done in many other communities around, around us. I think that these changes will improve the appearance of our community. They're important for us to be able to move forward with regards to putting us in a position of, of having an improved aesthetics, and so I'm excited to see this move forward. It's been a long time coming, it's probably been needed sooner than this, but we're glad to see that it's to this point. And the staff is here and available for questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Madam Mayor, I would move to defer seven days so we have a chance to digest the information that Councilwoman Hiller provided. We got four pages of information, two minutes before the meeting started.
We have a motion in a second to defer this item. Councilwoman Hiller?
Let me explain, I did not generate the, the email exchange, though you all are welcome to look at it. There are only, there are two simple amendments here for your consideration, and just, just so you know, it's not as ominous as maybe it looked. The one is that the section in the sign, the proposed code that required that a sign be covered if, if it was quote abandoned, versus just being left as it is, if it's in good shape. The example that troubled me is, is we think of the, the pylon signs, like the red carpet suite sign at, at 10th and Monroe, or now what will be an awful lot of monument signs, many more than we have now. And imagining what, following through with this one as it says, would be that on a, if you had this big tall sign that could stay up, it's conforming, it's expensive, it can be used again, the sign on it is in good condition. What the ordinance said, with the best of intentions, was that, that the sign had to come down, be covered with something opaque. I frankly, in any city, especially ours, would rather see a sign that, that looks great than one that is empty, or that's been wrapped around or covered up, because to me, that looks terrible. And so I didn't want our ordinance to require that. And so the, the amendment that you see on page, the, the first page that says Hiller Amendments, is simply to say that if a sign is conforming and safe and in good condition, those six-month and 24-month periods that are provided in, in the work that the staff did would apply, but you wouldn't have to mess with the sign. You could leave it the way it was, it was in good shape. We have really great maintenance language, so if the sign deteriorates, it has to come down anyway. So, and these three amendments were worked out with staff over time. The old, the other two pages that you see were the concern, what staff sent out last week for us, a list of comparable cities and what they do with their temporary signs. The proposal to us was that you could only have a sign, temporary sign, for, up to four times a year, and only 30 days per sign. The other comparable cities, even here in Kansas, allowed 60 or 90, or said, you can have a total of X number of days, and then you figure out how you want to put that together, but it can be up to a longer period. This is a big change for us, and I've, there are so many people that, and organizations and churches and so on that use temporary signs. I was concerned about limiting it to 30 days arbitrarily. And the same thing for, so what the staff, what, what we worked out that you have on these charts is simply to allow an alternative for temporary signs, that it can either be 30-day periods, four times a year, or staff suggested the alternative would be to allow one 60-day period, so that it was clear there was some flex. And then for feather flags, the staff's proposal was for 15-day periods a year only, and the, the amendment would just to offer an option of 30 days once. So, and that's all. These are, given the breadth of all the work that's been done on the sign ordinance, these are two pretty small things. But the first one, in terms of how the appearance is to all of us and to visitors, I think we're better off to let a, a sign that's in good shape stay up, because that would also apply to a strip on a monument sign, that you'd have to have a blank hole in it. So, something to think about.
Before we go any further, I want to ensure that we hear from Ms. Katrina Wrangler, who signed up to speak on this item. Ms. Wrangler, if you could please Ms. Ringer, if you could please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Ringer. I just wanted to say that I currently serve as the Chair of the Planning Commission. I also served on the Sign Committee that worked with the staff to come up with this plan. And we felt like, in the Planning Commission, that we could support the sign code update. I am here to say that personally and also on behalf of the Planning Commission. The city staff worked really hard with the consultant and the committee, and we spent many hours debating some of the things that you're talking about right now, discussing recommendations for various sign categories and different treatments and timelines and heights and setbacks. So, we think that, and I think personally, that this ordinance represents a fair compromise for the most critically needed revisions, but also provides some flexibility for future signs and future needs, and I hope that you agree and will vote in favor. And that's all I wanted to say.
So, Councilwoman Jensen.
So, if I could make a couple of quick comments. I don't necessarily agree with Councilwoman Hiller on your desire to leave an existing sign up. The point of a sign is to identify a business, and if the business is closed, having the sign remain there doesn't help anyone. I do agree in that we don't necessarily want to tear down a good sign, but, you know, people get off the highway, expect to see a hotel, and not an empty shell. So, if that sign was at least blacked out, or in some way not a hotel sign, then we're going to save people a lot of frustration. My point in delaying this was that it's not good governance to make split-second decisions. And I might indeed agree with you on a number of this, but I haven't had time to absorb any of this, let alone read the two-page email, I mean, and skimming over it. It looks like there's some good information and good conversations, but I haven't had time to absorb this or ask staff for additional feedback. And rather than waste the council's time in hauling them up here to ask these questions, I feel like delaying it seven days so we can digest this, make sure this is the right call for our community. You know, we need to get this right, not fast. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for the, Deputy Mayor.
Is this still up in the air to you, or have you figured, solved this with staff?
Worked it out with staff, and with that, I hadn't, I'd thought about it along the way, because it pushed up to a deadline, but I wasn't going to send our communication back and forth unless somebody was interested. It was, these were pretty simple. But I agree that it needs time. I'm fine with that. So, and also, I shouldn't say very appreciative of all the work. These are important, I think, but very minor compared to the whole thing.
Excuse me. Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that I necessarily need to wait another week. I think these are relatively simple amendments. I would probably be, feel pretty comfortable voting on them one by one if the motion were made.
Councilwoman Lesser.
I would concur with Councilwoman Mays. I think that's what we're here for. We've reviewed, we've reviewed the plan several times. I think that's what we're here for, is to have the conversation, ask the questions, and discuss the amendments and how we want to move forward. There again, while I respect that, I don't see the information as being overwhelming that would preclude me from being able to make a decision tonight and not delay it. Thank you.
Okay. So, would you like to keep your motion, since there seems to be a, we put the body that feels like they could make the vote tonight, or would you like to rescind your motion?
I mean, if everybody wants to take the time to go from point by point, that's fine. I have not had time to read through this two-page email, which there appears to be a good amount of information. I would question that my colleagues have had that time as well, given that we got it when we arrived here. So, I mean, yeah, if we want to address these amendments one by one, that's fine. You know, I'm happy to rescind that motion and make a motion for the original ordinance to be submitted with no amendments.
Deputy Mayor.
I think if you, if you read Bill's answer to Karen, it kind of addresses, you know, they're not going to write a sign code that addresses every scenario. And it said, you know, if we adopt this and come back next year to address things that need to be tweaked, because there will be, you know, there's going to be more than just this. So, I don't see any reason to wait either. I think we can go ahead and do it and...
Okay, so the motion to defer has been rescinded. Councilwoman Padilla, you want a second? Are you okay with that? Okay, so now at the floor, we have the motion as presented by the staff. Do we have a motion for approval of the document as presented? Deputy Mayor?
We have to...
We have a motion for approval for the document as presented. Do we have a second for the take of discussion? We have a second by Councilwoman Mays. At this point in time, the floor is open for discussion. Councilwoman Lesser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, also, I'd like to propose an easy amendment on line, starting on line 991.
Could you say what that section is?
Page 51. It's page 51, line 991, it'd be section Temporary Signs and Banners, where it starts on 943.
Page 51.
Yep. I would, I would like to propose an amendment for line 991 through 994 to read, until October 1st, 2020, rather than 2021, portable message center signs are permitted only in C2, C3, I1, I2, and for churches and their schools and residential districts. After October 1st, 2020, portable message center signs are prohibited in all districts and for all uses.
Okay, so this is shortening the time span that these temporary signs would be permitted. We have the First Amendment. I will just ask the body that, just for protocol purposes, we take each amendment one by one, vote it up or down, and just keep moving on to the next. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Comments or questions with regards to this amendment? Councilwoman Hiller.
There was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission level and otherwise with people that had those businesses and so on about providing a reasonable amount of time for them to get their money's worth back out of the signs and so on. Is there an update about, I think that's why this date was in here? So, it's just a question about whether we know more about that.
Councilmember Lesser, would you like...
I'm well aware of that. I think two years is too long. I think they can, a year is plenty of time to get rid of those. My position is they're going to sit for a year, and then in a year, they'll start trying to get rid of them, so. And the conversations I've had with my constituents and other business leaders in the community is they need to go, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, this is the First Amendment to shorten the time span for a year. We proceed by voting this First Amendment.
Okay, we have nine yes with Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. Any other amendments that would like to be presented to the body? Councilwoman Hiller.
On line, you've got your handout there, so lines 583 and 584, add language that would allow signs that are conforming, safe, in good condition not to be switched out immediately.
Do we have a second?
Can I, can you repeat that, please?
The amendment is, in where the language says, "A property owner shall either remove an abandoned sign that has been located on the property for more than six months," or "shall cover the sign," the amendment is to insert, "unless the sign is conforming, safe, and in good condition pursuant to TMC 18.10090." For the purpose of this section, it continues, "covered" would mean that they have to, that all sign copy, including graphics, is rendered invisible by being painted over, removed, replaced, or shielded by a rigid and opaque material. So, again, the context of that is anything that's in poor condition is supposed to be removed or replaced anyway.
Okay, we have an open motion, but we have more questions before we get to the second. Councilwoman Cohen.
Yeah, so would that get rid of the Stevie Ray's sign, or would that leave that there? I think the whole reason for bringing this up is to get rid of those signs, not to keep them up. Even the Capital Suites, I think, over there on 10th, I mean, don't you want that taken down? The business is gone.
Well, what this is...
Councilwoman Cohen, would you mind, just for the sake of discussion, since we're getting into discussion, to second it?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, we proceed to discussion.
My concern is that that sign, the space is going to be up, the sign pillar with the big bulb on top, or the monument sign, or even that wall sign, is going to be there for either six to 24 months. By the way, this is written now, so it's not like the sign itself's going to be gone. It's what's it going to look like for us in town and for visitors to town? And so, is it going to be this blank, like, let's say, a tall sign? And I'm not familiar with the Stevie Ray sign, or maybe you'd need to help me with that. In the pictures?
Yeah.
I guess they're not up here. I didn't, I brought my notebook, but I didn't bring all the, so. Anyway, the deal is, what do you want to look at? Do you want to look at something that we who live here know it, the business isn't there anymore, but at least the sign looks fine? Or do we want to see this blank, opaque sign, or something wrapped or painted over for six to 24 months? I would rather see a sign that I personally know is outdated, but that at least it looks all right, if it's going to be there.
Councilwoman Lesser to be followed by Councilwoman Jensen by Deputy Mayor.
I'll make two comments. One sign that is covered up that I noticed, actually just driving by the other day, that to me does not, is not distasteful, is the Gage North Bowl sign. It's been covered up. It is not distasteful. Much rather have that than the Stevie Vaughn, you know? The other problem I do have with this is the language, I just don't know it's good, I don't know that it's good policy to use the language unless the sign is conforming, safe, and in good condition. The sign "good" is what's good. Good to one person is not good to the other. It creates other ambiguous problems, and there again, I think we're better off the way that it's written. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen.
So, I appreciate what you're trying to do, which, you know, the whole point of the sign ordinance is aesthetics. At the same time, signs around Topeka are not for you and I. They're for our out-of-town visitors. You and I know the businesses are closed, or where Walmart is, that sort of thing. The signs are for folks that don't necessarily know where the businesses are, and so having those signs up, in my opinion, is a disservice to the visitors we're trying to attract to the community. They see a sign, and they assume there's a business there, and there's not. So, I do agree with the premise of what you're trying to do, which is aesthetics, but I can't support leaving a sign up and advertising a business that's no longer there. If you want to talk about how we might modify masking of that so that it's not necessarily just, you know, cling-wrapped or what have you, I would be open to discussing that, but I think if the business is closed, the sign needs to come down so we're not advertising something that's not there.
Deputy Mayor.
I agree and disagree. Those signs are for me, too. Nothing makes me more angry when I go, wow, I wonder if they're still there. You know, so I don't even check it out, because half the time, I'm not really sure if the sign stayed and they left, and that happens to me quite often. And so, I just don't go in, because I'm not sure if they're true.
Councilwoman Mays, and then I'll give the floor back to Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that in relation to the, or in regards to the Stevie Ray's sign, if you go down just a little bit, it does say, "A property owner shall remove a non-conforming abandoned sign immediately when the primary building on the property is demolished or removed." And so, if it is a vacant lot, which we've got several of these in town, it's not just that one, where they've torn down the building and for whatever reason, left the sign. And so, that, it does address that, that if the building is demolished, the sign has to be demolished as well.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Pepinchales would be another one like that. And I think a lot of us remember that was Sir Somebody or others down at 29th and Fairlon that was just all broken up and hanging, hanging down for years. And nobody wants that, and this, as you pointed out, this does deal with that. So, if a, if a sign is in poor repair, it's supposed to be gone, whether the business is still there or not, and then torn down. I guess for me, my most frequent access to, access point to the city is coming off I-70 at 10th Street, where the red carpet is, and it's, the picture there is here. If I'm not looking for a place to stay, I'm not paying attention to that hotel that's vacant and so on. Well, I see that sign, and I turn, and I go into downtown, and it doesn't faze me at all. But if we, I mean, the way this is written now, that sign would have to be just opaque, would be blank, or covered up, or I don't think you'd ever paint over or something like that, all that, that's one of the options here. And so, what would happen? Because that's a very good access point to Topeka. Downtown looks great, the Capitol looks great, coming in on 10th Street is great, but if my first impression of Topeka is a, is a covered-up motel sign, and then I look at that hotel, then it's going to ruin my whole feeling. We have people coming to the Capitol and coming through all the time. And so, it was that image for me that drove me to think, you know, we're better off. I know all of us get sick of looking at things. We've been through this with old vacant houses, too. But realistically, in terms of the impression that it makes on someone, I'd rather have that sign there than have it covered up. And so, that's where I was coming from.
Thank you. We have heard from, I think, every council member, pretty much. So, at this point in time, we do have a motion on the floor. We proceed by voting whether we adopt the motion proposed by Councilwoman Hiller. A yes vote would be in support to changing the language to Councilwoman Hiller's proposal. A vote for no would be to leaving the language as the Planning Commission left it. Councilwoman Lesser.
We're just simply voting on her amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Thank you.
Correct.
We have one yes. Mrs. Hiller.
Additional amendments proposed to the body on this ordinance. Councilwoman Hiller.
I think this, the second, can be a pair, rather than, I think the way to phrase it would be that to add an item number four in the chart that is on page 597, and a number three in the chart that is item 987, simply allowing some flexibility for temporary signs in general and for feather flags. So, the language would be, staff, staff did the language on all these. So, this is language that the staff developed. It's highlighted in yellow as an additional number for footnote for the chart on yard signs and freestanding banners, and an additional footnote for the chart on feather signs. That makes, didn't make sense?
No.
Okay. When you, when you see the handout...
Councilwoman Lesser, yes?
Take your reference in the handout versus the actual, the ordinance.
The ordinance.
I am. But the handout has the chart that matches the ordinance and the line number. The amendment would be to simply add the extra footnote to both of those charts. There was a handout. Did you get the handout?
I did get the handout, but I'd rather look at the ordinance than the handout.
Oh, sure.
I mean, we're changing the ordinance, not the handout. I don't, so I don't...
It's page 49 and page 50.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
And why? What's the benefit? Why did you want to amend this?
I looked at the handout that, I'm concerned, because so many people use temporary signs, and when they have events, sometimes they want to put their signs up more than 30 days in advance. I've experienced that before, I think. And we're really downsizing the ability to use feather flags at all. I mean, almost to nothing. And so, I don't know how people will want to use them. My thought was, when I looked at the comparative, comparison chart that the staff gave us with this last, I don't remember whether it was posted on the, on the menu, on the agenda or not, but we, they emailed us a comparative chart for different cities and what they have for the time periods for temporary signs and for feather flags. And the other cities were more flexible, for the most part, than we, than the proposal that we had. So, I talked about it back and forth with Bill, and this was a modest addition to some flexibility. There is no, there's no language in there about being able to ask for an exception on these.
Councilman Jensen.
So, I have to forgive my confusion here. What was it, and what have you changed specifically?
What it was, was that for, on the chart on page 49, the, and help me, Bill, if I'm misstating anything, the time period was limited to four times 30 days only, maximum of 30 days to have the signs up, as many as four times a year.
Okay.
The staff's suggestion to offer some flexibility was to offer an alternative of a single 60-day time period for, for the yard signs and freestanding banners. And then, for feather flags, the proposal that had come forward was that you could use them up to four times a year, for no longer than 15 days each time. And so, the proposal in that number, line number three, was that there could be a single time period of 30 days, or the four 15-day periods.
Madam Mayor. So, if I could follow up, then how is that going to affect the feather flags that are used every Saturday at the farmer's market, and when we do food trucks in downtown for festivals?
I personally like feather flags, and I'm fine with that. What we have in front of us would put them, would make them all illegal, and they would have to stop. No feather flags all the time, as I understand it.
City Manager.
If Mr. Farner addressed that particular issue, please, thank you.
Sure. The feather flags would be accommodated in the new code. They're actually not, right now. We're just not enforcing it. So, the, what you have from the planning commission is a, as was stated, for 15 days periods that you can use throughout the year. So, your question, Councilman Jensen, wouldn't affect the use of the feather flags for your events. And quite honestly, weekend and special events, we're not enforcing those. We're not. So, the effect is, A, this would accommodate feather flags, not at the same timeframe as smaller temporary signs. And Councilwoman Heller's amendment would just add a option to have a 30-day period for a feather flag, as opposed to four 15-day periods throughout the year. It's just adding an option for those that would rather have a continuous period of time throughout the year for their flags.
Thank you.
I personally thought they should be just the same as the other temporary signs, so it would be easier to remember.
Okay, so, we've had the discussion. Councilwoman Heller, would you like to make a motion to present this, to see if there's a second?
I move that the council would amend the, I don't know whether to use the line item or the page, would amend line items 977 with their charts, and 987 with its chart, by adding footnote number four and footnote number three, respectively, as displayed on the handout.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Councilman Lesser.
There again, my position on the feathered flag is, I think this is part of what we're trying to get rid of. I foresee an abundance of additional feather flags that, once we remove the other temporary signs that we just gave a year to get rid of, I see them as a cheap alternative to businesses with infrastructure here, with buildings, with their own permanent signs and stuff like that. I think the shorter the better, therefore, while I would rather see them not even allowed except for special events and weekend activities, I don't know the research that the committee has done on them, I would support what they have, but I certainly would not support any additional time. I just think they're trashy.
Okay. All right, we proceed by voting on this amendment, only the amendment.
Okay, we have five yes, so the motion fails. We have clear, Padilla, Cohen, Lesser, and the mayor voting no.
Okay, motion fails. At this point in time, what we have in front of us, if there's no more amendment, is the ordinance asked amended. Councilman Mays.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval, and we have a second, second by Councilman Lesser. Additional comments or discussions?
Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
Motion moved by Councilman Lesser, second by Councilman, I mean, Mays. Mays made the motion, Lesser seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, we proceed by voting.
Okay, we have nine yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Not having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the non-action items. City Manager, if the clerk would read.
Six A is discussion of proposed, neglected, foreclosed, and vacant property registration programs. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In an effort to continue to move forward with our effort to improve the aesthetics of different properties and to address blight within our community, we have looked at a couple of different options. And Sasha Hahn is the Neighborhood Relations Director, and she has developed a potential couple of programs that will assist us with that, one being the elected property, the other being foreclosed and vacant property registration programs. So, tonight, I'm going to have her give a presentation on those, and then we stand for questions.
Your Honor, everyone, body members, good evening. I'm at the tail end of the meeting, so I'm going to try not to keep you too long. I'm sure everybody's ready to go home. So, over the last couple of years, you and I have been having a conversation about cultural transformation in our community. But I want to back up, sorry, just real quick and correct something. And I hate to correct you, Mr. Trout, but I did not come up with these. I stole them from other places. I am not smart.
You brought them to me.
Yes. So, I didn't invent anything, we just did what we often do in government and borrowed. So, you'll remember last year, we talked about that cultural transformation, and we talked about the mission and philosophy of our Property Maintenance Division being transforming the maintenance of Topeka, of all Topeka neighborhoods, from optional to required. So, we're here to talk a little bit more about that this evening. I did want to give you a little bit of history, for those of you that weren't here for all of this. I did make a short list. This is in everything that we've done to try to address blight and neglected properties in the community, but these are some of the things. So, just to hit a few of the high points, this body adopted the International Property Maintenance Code prior to the formation of the Neighborhood Relations Department, and that standardized our codes. The creation of the Neighborhood Relations Department pulled together our property maintenance operations with our housing services programs that helps low-income property owners and tenants to have rehabilitation work done that's needed on the homes that they live in. So, that was a really great synergy that the, was created within that department. I won't read all of these to you, you're familiar with all of them, but some of the really key ones is our relationship with the Police Department, the Prosecutor's Office, and the Municipal Court. I do want to highlight Team Up to Clean Up. In case you weren't aware, we will be presenting at a national conference on that program. We've been recognized at the national level, and will present in Atlanta in October, and then at the state level. The program's won an award at the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference for crime prevention, I believe. So, we're excited about that. Again, just reviewing some of the things that you guys have already done to address blight in the community. You'll remember this slide from last year. I again stole this from someone else, I didn't create it. Lisk came up with this slide, but this is a very good visual of the properties that our Property Maintenance Department deals with. We've got the properties in compliance, those that are not, and then what we want to focus on this evening is that 20% that don't care. When I gave this presentation to the city manager and the department directors at our agenda review meeting, we had a lot of discussion about me trying to come up with what these numbers, these percentages, mean in Topeka. So, in case anyone has that question in your mind, what I can tell you is that I cannot give you an exact number. What I could tell you is the percentage of the active cases that we have in a year, and what numbers represented by that percentage. But because there is no way that we have an open case on every property that has a violation in Topeka, understanding that there are approximately 51,000, and we have eight inspectors, I can't give you the actual numbers in Topeka that are represented by those percentages. So, if you have that question, I'm sorry, I can't answer it. But I do believe this is a good rule of thumb, that probably a national average that we can all agree probably feels pretty right for Topeka. Okay, a few more tools for you all to consider. I want to point out, this is not a magic bullet, a silver bullet, or a magic wand, depending on what your desired outcome is. These registration programs will not fix every problem property in Topeka. Properties that have deceased owners with no heirs, this is not going to fix those properties. Properties, in some cases, that we can identify the owner, this will not fix those properties. These programs that I'm going to discuss with you this evening will be effective for property owners that will be motivated by a monetary penalty applied to their property if they don't occupy it, fix it up to meet our minimum standards, or get it out of the foreclosure status. That is basically, if you boil these down to the nuts and bolts, what they do, they give folks a financial incentive to do something more productive with their properties. So, the neglected property registration, for those of you that we've met with and talked to, you'll remember, we discussed it's for both commercial and residential properties. It would be for occupied and unoccupied properties. It would require an annual registration. What we've proposed to the body is $125 a year. This registration would be triggered by an owner neglecting their property, and there are a long list of ways that that could happen, but I've given you a couple just to think about. We've cited a property for a housing violation, and in a 12-month period, the owner doesn't address it. Or take that one step further, and the case goes to court, and they don't show up and a bench warrant is issued for their arrest. Those are just two examples of what would trigger the requirement to register your property with the neglected property registration. We believe that it would be wise to require a resident agent for owners that are further than 60 miles from the city of Topeka where they live. If we have an emergency situation with a property in town, and the owner's in California, we oftentimes have difficult time getting the timely responsiveness that we need to solve, whatever that emergency situation might be. We'd also like to require a statement of intent from the owner that requires the owner to give us in writing a plan of action to bring their property back up to that minimum standard that's required in the International Property Maintenance Code. This would include milestones and timelines that our Property Maintenance Division then could measure the property owner's performance against. And if they don't meet their own milestones and timelines provided in their statement of intent, they could be penalized. What we've proposed for that penalty is up to $250 a quarter, not to exceed $1,000 a year. If they are notified that they have to register their property, and they fail to do that, it would be that same $250 a quarter, up to $1,000 a year. That's what we've proposed to the group. Okay, vacant property registration. This one is specifically about having a vacant property in the city of Topeka. It is not maybe as egregious as the neglected properties and foreclosed properties, but it still can be very problematic for the community. So, we, again, would look to this as a tool to motivate an owner to get their property back into productive use, occupy it, or perhaps sell it to someone that could use it. Again, an annual registration, what we've proposed to the body is $125 a year. We would require contact information for all three of these registrations, well, the mortgage one would be slightly different, but for this and the neglected property registration, contact information would have to include an actual physical address for the owner. A P.O. box is not going to work. We need to know where you're at, and we need to know an accurate phone number that we can get ahold of you 24/7, in case our emergency services folks have an issue and need to contact you in the middle of the night. We want good, solid contact information for owners of vacant properties. Again, we're suggesting a resident agent for properties that are owned by owners more than 60 miles from Topeka. That 60-mile radius seemed like a reasonable amount of time to expect an owner to get to town, or get someone to town to respond to an emergency situation. And ironically, it also got us to the state borders on the north and the east, so it seems like a good fit. That's where we came up with 60 miles. This, we believe, would bring increased awareness to the owners about our local standards for property maintenance, for this and the neglected property registration. Again, it would provide a monetary incentive for the owners to occupy or sell their properties, and this would just be a once-annual registration. So, foreclosed property registration, this is a program that we actually learned about from Wyandotte County. They implemented a foreclosure registration and a vacant registration last May. They've registered to date over 1,000 properties in Wyandotte County through both of those registrations, and the city has received over $100,000 in revenue from those programs. The foreclosure, or foreclosed property registration would be a biannual registration, is what we've proposed to you. We have an individual, a representative from one of the vendors, that actually administers these foreclosed property registrations, and the company that works in Wyandotte County, in discussions with them about the fees and the, how frequent that registration should be happening. It's, they've educated us that that foreclosure process can change quickly enough that every six months, you could have different properties on your foreclosure registry. So, they suggest a biannual registration, and we support that. Again, accurate contact information for the lender, or whoever is responsible for the property, and a local contact for that property preservation, whether it's a real estate agent, or a property management company that they've hired. We want valid contact information on, when we, so that we can contact them anytime that there's an emergency, night or day. Again, we believe this is going to bring increased awareness about our property maintenance requirements to those mortgage companies and lenders... requirements to those mortgage companies and lenders that maybe are not physical presences in our community. I don't know about you all, but in the four years that I've lived in the house that my husband and I own, we've had three mortgage companies, and that has not had anything to do with us requesting it. They're just selling that paper. So, we think this would give us a method to, or a better possibility of ensuring that those responsible parties know what the rules are in Topeka. And it would provide a financial incentive for the lenders to move the properties from foreclosure to sale and homeownership because they're paying, if you went with the proposed registration fee, $600 a year per property that they own in Topeka that is in the foreclosure status. Questions? We might have been delighted to answer your questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Back here on, you said the registration program can, and there's a list, and then you said this will do a lot to fix some of the issues now.
I know.
What percent do you think it will fix?
Okay, so you're in luck. As I mentioned, we have Kevin Sidella with ProChamps. He can talk to you about actual percentages in similar communities like Wyandotte County. The neglected property registration, Mr. Sidella is not going to be able to talk to you about. They don't administer that program. When we spoke to Wichita, which, kudos to Councilmember Ortiz for finding that program and pointing it out to us. When we spoke to the city of Wichita about how effective it was, the feedback was mixed. They said it was very effective in the area that they wanted to use it as a tool to address, but they ran out of funds to pay staff to administer the program, so they have a very short window of results. It was very successful in a small geographic area, but they don't have a history that they could share with us. So, I can't share with you on that one, but if you want to talk to Mr. Sidella, we can do that now, or I can answer the rest of your questions for me, and then we can have him come up, whatever your pleasure.
Actually, my next question's for him.
Okay.
Sure. Well, thank you all for having me. It's a pleasure to visit Topeka. So, my company's called ProChamps. We manage property registration solutions for 230 different municipalities around the country, 11 different states, Kansas is one of them. We're excited to talk to you. These property registration programs are, they're custom-made for the municipality that we're serving. We like to focus on properties that are at risk of becoming a source of neighborhood blight, so your rentals, your vacancies, your foreclosures. And the process for all three is different. On the foreclosure side, we have a paper trail to follow. We know what is happening at the courthouse, the filings. We've registered properties, a million properties in the last 10 years nationwide from 6,000 different banking entities. So, we know who can be held accountable for a foreclosure registry program here in Topeka, and we know how to get them to comply because we've gotten them to comply in other municipalities. Vacants is a little bit of a different story. Vacants is, well, let me back up. There's literally 2,000 different municipalities around the country that have some form of property registration programs. Most of them look good on paper. You get to feel like you're doing something about it, but at the end of the day, it falls to already overburdened staff to maintain a registry, and it doesn't go that well. That's why we think we're a sage solution, and we introduce sage policy to communities like you to combat these issues. On the vacant side, what we do is we work with the community that we're working on behalf of to come up with a list of what we think is vacant. There's no positive way to figure out whether a home's vacant. I don't want to tell you anything that isn't true. I'm not going to be walking the streets of Topeka peeking in windows to see what's occupied and what's not. Nobody should do that, and I never will. We're running this from a call center in Florida, and we're using data to get to our potential candidates for registration, our obligations to register. On the vacant side, we work with your staff to come up with a list. We send out a mailing. The mailing has a QR code on it, so they can hover over it with their smartphone. It takes them right to an address that we think is vacant, that they have an obligation to register, and they'll have the ability to file for an exemption if they say, you know, I'm there half a year, or maybe they're in the military, they're overseas, they're deployed. Those are reasons for exemptions, and as long as your staff is reviewing those exemptions to say, yes, that's true, they're away, they're on military, we're okay, they don't have to pay the fee, or no, I don't think they're telling the truth, we want them to pay the fee, we can work on those lines, too. The success of the vacant property registry is much lower than the success of the foreclosure registry. Right now in Topeka, I know there are 219 or 214 properties that are in a state of foreclosure. We'll get those registered for you, just like we did in Wyandotte County. We got 1,000 properties registered for them since we started in May of 2018. Foreclosures, some of them are vacant, most of them are foreclosures. But the reason that I think Topeka would want to consider doing something like this, particularly in regard to the foreclosures, is not because of what the market looks like right now. Right now, you were at the lowest point of your foreclosures that you have in the last 15 years. But I'm looking back to those 2009 numbers, when Topeka had 179 foreclosures filed in one quarter. And in 2011, the first quarter of 2011, you had 1,021 active foreclosures statewide. So, it's not about now, it's about the next economic downturn, which is only right around the corner. I mean, economic downturns are cyclical. We have one historically about every 10 years, and we're about to. Hopefully, it doesn't happen, or maybe it won't be as bad as it was the last time, but it's, I think it's a good policy to introduce now. And the point you do it, or the reason you do it, is to put your staff in touch with the responsible party when they need to know. When the grass is this tall and the lenders are busted out, and they don't know who to call, they can spend all day playing Sherlock Holmes, or they could use us. We do it for them. Put them in touch with the responsible party faster. So, I've said a lot, I've said it fast, and I'm sorry I talk fast, and I know it's late, but I do have all of your foreclosures mapped out here on the screen. I don't know if it's possible to get this up in front of you so you can kind of see what I'm looking at here. So, on the foreclosure side, just real quick, there's two numbers in the upper left-hand corner of the screen. The first number, 214, those are foreclosures that I know we could get if we had a program in place right now, if there was an ordinance requiring registration. The second number, 64, that's potential foreclosures. Foreclosure actions that were taken within your city limits in the last two years have been sold in that same timeframe. So, it would be our job as the administrator of this program, if that's how you want to go, to go and see if it was just flipped to another bank, or was it sold to an individual property owner. And what we found in Kansas City is about 40% of the second number become actual registrants. So, your numbers are good. The economy is strong. This is a good time, but it's, again, what happens when the economy goes bad again? We know what your numbers can be. We've got a lot of houses here. It's a big city. Foreclosures can get much higher than this. Any questions so far?
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things. How many years have you been in business?
10 years.
And you said 2,000 municipalities have some sort of this program? Out of how many?
Well, 2,000 municipalities have programs pertaining to vacant or foreclosure, some kind of property registration program. 230 of them work with us. Most of them are just policy that gets enacted, and no one really enforces the law. The registrations are more what we call reactive.
But how many, out of how many municipalities are there? You're saying 2,000? Is that a lot? Is that little? I don't know if there's 150,000 municipalities.
Oh, that's a lot.
Do you know?
No, there are 2,000 individual municipalities with some form of property registration.
Okay, but how many don't have any?
Probably a lot more.
Okay.
I don't know. I've never done the research on how many don't have it. I'm sorry.
Because I don't know if that's good, bad, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot. What I'm trying to say is, our program is very proactive. The only way our company makes money is by getting registrations for you. The way our contracts work is we keep $100 of every successful registration that we collect. I'm a very unique vendor. I will never send your city a bill. What you're doing is entering into a contract to give me permission to keep $100 of every registration that we collect. So, we're very proactive. We're going to devise means to get those properties registered, to get your staff contact information. So, most of these 2,000 communities that have these programs, they're reactive, it's on the books, they sit back and wait for folks to register. It's great if they do, but nothing really happens if they don't. Ours is different. We're going to be aggressive.
Okay, and then, I guess, and I think I asked this when we were talking about this of staff, and I don't know a delicate way to say this because I'm just not that kind of person. What, how do we know if you get, say, 500 foreclosures? How do we really know you got 500 foreclosures? Maybe you got 800 and only gave us $500.
No, that's a great, that's a really good question. What we would do for Topeka is we would build you a database of all the parcels that exist in your city, not just the foreclosures, not just the vacancies, everything. And then we're going to tag the information as we gather registrations. In real time, your staff will be able to see via a dashboard, just like we created for Kansas City, of what's coming in. So far this month, we've had 13 registrations in Wyandotte County, and they can see those as they're gathered. And every 30 days, we send a check to you. On the 15th of each month, we send you a check for your portion of the fee. So, if you set your fee for foreclosure registry at 300, you would get 200, we would get 100, you'd get a check every 30 days. And it comes with an accounting, but you can also track that in real time.
Okay, thank you.
And I can show you the dashboard if you really want to see it for Kansas City, just to get a feel for what it looks like.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Councilman Jensen.
While you're pulling that up, I'll ask my question.
Sure.
So, I'm interested in how you integrate with our existing city system so we can minimize staff time. I'm thinking of, you know, if there's a house that's quote-unquote abandoned, but yet there are active building permits pulled on that house, and staff are reporting inspections, is that a way to automatically clear that through your system so that we don't have to have a staff member go in and flag it as, yes, the residence is under renovation, that's why it's quote-unquote unoccupied, that sort of thing?
That's a really good question. And yes, we do integrate with a lot of different cities and the software that they're using because you don't need to track things in multiple places. We can either provide your staff with a live feed of what we collect, data feed, we can do it once a month, that's what most municipalities do, just so everything's on the same page. So, everything we collect will be put into your database. Or we can do vice versa. We have communities we work with that use ours to do things like track sewer bills. You can do that, too, whatever you'd like.
So, we don't have to have staff version copy and paste from the system?
No. No, and it's important to note, too, and I just want to say, is if we did this, if you came with our company, if you used our company, everything that we would build on behalf of Topeka would be proprietary to you per the contract. And I say that because we're gathering sensitive information. It's not ours to go out and peddle to a third party. By contract, we are not allowed to do that. It's yours. And if two years from now, you decide, you know what, we don't need them, we can do this on our own, we can simply export it, and you can go and do whatever you'd like with it, it's yours. But I will say, 10 years of doing this, we haven't had that happen very many times. I can count them on one hand. In fact, we've taken on, we've taken on 50 new communities this calendar year. So, usually when a community comes with us, they stay with us. It runs, I don't want to say it runs itself. From your perspective, it runs itself. For us, it's a lot of work. Okay, let me show you Kansas. One second. Okay, we'll be Brett here. Come on, I'm sorry. I had it all set up in a timeout.
Councilman Emerson has a question for you while it's loading up.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, and I like a lot of things about this program. I guess I do have concern about the neglected property registration, and my concern is I've come to court code, excuse me, code court here three or four times in the last couple of years, and what I really notice is the people who get caught up in this neglected property thing are not, you know, you hear people talk about, you know, slum lords and stuff, and it's not that. It's the 80-year-old lady who can't afford to fix her gutter. And so, I hate the thought of a company, you know, any company, you know, calling and further harassing these people who their only problem is they're poor, or need people help. What are the protections built into that and that particular portion?
Well, on the foreclosures, what I can say is, we register these properties, these are banks, they're in other states, they're in other countries.
Sure, and again, and I'm fine with that, with the banks. They're a business, and they have a financial interest in it. I'm great, I'm fine with holding them accountable. I'm just worried, like I said, it's bad enough, I mean, if you, some of the calls I've gotten from people, they get these letters, and they feel all of a sudden like they're criminal because they didn't paint their house. And they know their house needs painted, but they can't afford it.
So, Councilmember Emerson, ProChamps hasn't agreed, they don't administer the neglected property registrations for anybody, maybe we can be the first. But at this point, what we've done is talk to the legal department so that the ordinance that will be presented to you all would, what we're kind of batting around eternally is, would maybe still require the registration in that program and a statement of intent of, here's what I intend to do to address my property, but it waives the fees related. If they can provide us with income verification, which we already have a system to set up to verify people's incomes, and we have HUD income limits for LMI individuals in the community from HUD, so we have that system in place, we could exempt them from the fee piece of the program, but still require them to be proactively engaged in helping us understand what's happening to fix their property.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry if you want to show your thing.
That's fine. It's a good question. We wouldn't go after anybody under that. If we did that for your city, we wouldn't be able to do it without them telling us to do it, because like I said, we're running it from a call center in Florida. We have no way of knowing if it's neglected. That's why we truly call our community partners are not just customers, it's a partnership. We're partnering with you on this. So, this is what we did for Kansas City. This is a dashboard, this is what Brett sees when he first logs in. We would do the same exact thing for Topeka. We break our registrations down by month, paid periods, our registrations collected. So, if you see September 19, we've collected 13 so far. Last month, we had 40. Our highest registration month was April, that's 109. And these are vacant and foreclosed homes. They're not always the same, they could be one or the other. Last year, we did 553 deregistrations, are those yellow cases basically, where we saw evidence of either vacancy or foreclosure, we went in, and they got back to us and said, no, it's not in a state of foreclosure, here's our proof. We just take them off the list at that point. But let's just create a very quick hypothetical. Foreclosure registries, vacant property registries are my passion in life, they put most folks to sleep. It's getting late, I don't want to do that to you. So, let's say Brett gets a phone call about this address right here, 11221, Sorder Drive. He can simply come in and search the address, and let's say that their code, hypothetical, there's a pool in the backyard that needs to be drained. That's a problem. Brett can simply come in here, search the address, hit the violation tab, and I always tell folks during our trainings, be overly descriptive with what's wrong with the property. Go out and take a picture of the pool that needs to be drained. You can add it here as an attachment. Once you hit submit, a copy goes to us, a copy goes to the bank, a copy goes to the city, and a copy goes to the responsible party, the property manager, so that everybody involved in the parcel knows they've got to get out and drain the pool. Before it is, anything else, it's a communications tool, but it's one that you would get for free. We're never going to send you a bill, and you're actually going to make revenue off of it. It's not going to solve your budget problems or put in your new pipes, and I sell those price tags, and it's pretty big, but at least it's to the good. Very limited risk.
Councilman Lister.
Thank you. So, will you guys ever be making phone calls where you're actually asking for payment?
Sure. For foreclosure and vacant property registration, yes.
The question I have in that is, will we be protected by contract? I'm trying to get at the Fair Deck Collection Act. If you guys violate it, and we get named in it, how are we protected in those situations so we don't become encumbered with any type of judgment or burden?
That's a great question. We put an indemnification clause in our contract, so if we do anything that we shouldn't do, you're indemnified under contract. And we would be willing to change that language for anything specific that you'd like to see if it doesn't cover enough. But yeah, basically, when we reach out, if we see evidence of registration, we're going to show them the ordinance that you have, your law, we're going to show them our contract to administer it, and then try to get them to register. If they don't comply, well, we have to talk about enforcement, but that's kind of putting the cart before the horse. We want to see what we can get first. It could be as successful as it was in Wyandotte County, I'm not sure. But yeah, if we do anything that, that's our fault.
It's a trend. I know with clients of mine, there's been a trend, definitely, of those type of actions being brought, so I just wanted to make sure we were protected if we did so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Jensen.
What's your spin-up time?
We've done the research already in Shawnee County and what we would need to implement this kind of program. I think we could probably get you live in 60 to 90 days, once the ordinance and the contract is passed. We already have your parcel ID set. I do a little homework before we come.
Councilman Heller.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
When I had my one-on-one with staff about this, I, one of the challenges, as I'm trying to sort this out, is to say, well, okay, we have some interesting solutions and some things that you've done that were, have helped in other communities. We tend to not have that much of a foreclosure rate, not compared to other communities, and we haven't been hit as badly. First time I did a deep dive into that was in the 80s, and I've seen them go, it sounds like the, from our last round here, the lenders, it's been much easier to get through the lender trail and get them to take responsibility for properties than it used to be. I'm sure that can be cyclical as well. My question would be, if you said 241 properties, was that the number?
214.
214.
Today. Those numbers change all the time.
I mean, we're kind of doing data gathering, but what's the problem with those? Of those, how many would you expect in a typical city or in Topeka to actually be something we needed to deal with?
Well, that's a really good question, and I don't know if there's an accurate way to answer it, it varies from municipality to municipality. The problem with foreclosures is, when someone gets that foreclosure action, they get that letter from the bank that says, hey, you're not paying your mortgage, we've got to work through this, maybe they file a legal action. The bank usually doesn't do that. They really give people a lot of time typically before they go to that point where they're creating that legal trigger. But once that happens, the person who has been foreclosed on doesn't pick up the phone when they decide to leave and call the bank and say, hey, this has been great, thanks for the loan, I can't afford this, I'm leaving tonight, I just wanted to let you know, they don't call Topeka and say, hey, you know what, we can't, we can't do this anymore, we're moving somewhere else, I just wanted to give you a heads up. They just leave, and then it's your problem.
Right, but they get a six-month grace period or even a year, depending on how.
The banks can be, can be very flexible.
Yeah.
So I don't know, there's any way for me to delve in exactly how many of these foreclosures are a problem for you from a code enforcement angle, but it's an at-risk property, it's something you should look to, I think you should look to register, and a lot of other municipalities feel the same way.
I know that those can be frustrating for neighbors when they do, when the property gets identified, and then it turns out it's in foreclosure. And I don't know how much luck staff has had tracking those through, I just wondered. I mean, the other ones, in terms of the registry, and this might be more of a Sasha question than a you question, but you've worked on them in other communities. The way we do our code compliance, the staff identifies an issue, writes it up, and in the process, finds the person. And then they get so much time to resolve the problem. Part of the staff's developed procedures, which is very good, is to work with those individuals to come up with a timeframe and a plan. That's what we do now. And so I've had a hard time being able to figure out why a registry would add anything except a layer of bureaucracy and some more fines to a system that we have that's pretty good, that's laced right into the property maintenance code and enforcement.
Do you want to say this?
I'd be happy to. Okay, so just to give you a scenario from recently, I believe it was in Councilmember Lesser's district, or it might have been Councilmember Mays. We had a house that was a problem property, it remained in the name of the person who had been foreclosed on, and we weren't notified that it had been foreclosed until we had sent the bill to collection, which means it had gone on for months and months, I want to say between 12 months and 18 months, before the bill went to collection, and that's when the former owner called us up mad, and which, injury to insult, you lost your home and now I'm harassing you with things on a property you don't even own anymore, right? Called us up and said, that house got foreclosed on, I haven't lived there in a year, gave us the name of a bank, didn't turn out to be that bank, but after some more detective work, like Mr. Sidella alluded to, staff was able to figure out who the appropriate bank was, but then it still took an enormous amount of staff time and effort to track down who the person is. When Mr. Sidella and I were visiting earlier, he said, each one of these officers at a bank can have over 5,000 properties that they're responsible for. So the, it may feel like a layer of bureaucracy, but Mike can tell you story after story after story about foreclosed properties that have languished for over a year in many cases, and we don't get, we don't figure it out until we get an angry call from the person who lost their house, and has to go a long ways before that happens. The banks aren't calling us, and they're not correcting the information with the Register of Deeds. We don't know why they do that, but that's a fact, they're not.
When we talked in that group of properties, I asked how many a year we were dealing with, and your estimate was roughly 25.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if that was just foreclosed properties, or ones where it was just hard to track down the owner.
That was quite potentially a foreclosed properties, but only ones that had been brought to our attention.
Understood.
Because, I mean, you all, you all know the landscape, we have eight guys, we have 51,000 properties, we have, I mean, they can't see them all. So a lot of it is proactive, but much of it is reactive in the sense that a neighbor called, a CCLF click fix came in. So that 25, I don't think is wholly representative of the 214 that he's talking about, could potentially be foreclosures in the community.
I was just trying to figure out what, that's a lot of information if our problem is this small, and what would the most cost-effective use of our time and resources would be. So I just wanted to see.
And to clarify exactly what he said, so I need to be clear with you all, I'm not suggesting that we run into a contract with Mr. Sidella, he's been great to work with, he's been a wealth of information, and very open with sharing their system with us. I believe, and we put this in our recommendation to the city manager, that we should probably do an RFP for the services. Up until last week, I did think that these guys were the only game in town, we have beat the bushes looking for other companies that do this, and I did stumble across information about another one just last week. So we should do an RFP, we should do the right thing, it's not my money, it's, you know, their money. But I'll be interested to see if any other company provides you with the same proposal, where they are not charging the city a contracted fee for this service. If we set the, you guys could choose to set the registration fees for neglected and vacant at 100 bucks, that means that these guys get paid, city's out of it, but we're not really, we're just receiving that information so that we can contact the appropriate people when we need to. Or you could collect a little bit out of that and set the fees appropriately so that the city gets compensated for some of the trouble and time that we spend on these properties. Because what we're talking about is that 20%, that's problem properties owned by property owners that don't care, are dead, live in another state, et cetera, et cetera.
City manager.
I have a couple other comments that I would say as far as why we want to see this program. I think that one of the things that it does is, is we contact these owners that have neglected properties, and the system forces them to provide us a plan, so that we're not asking them to fix everything overnight, but that they tell us what are the steps they're going to take to fix the items that have already been identified with regards to code violations that they haven't already fixed, based on their having gone to court and been found guilty and maybe even paid a fine there, they still don't fix it. This is an administrative way that continues to position us to be able to get that information from them and that action from them. And so I think that that, for me, is an important component of this. And as I said, this becomes an administrative action as well, it gives us a tool that we don't have to go back and do this again through the court system. It forces, it provides us an opportunity to do it administratively to eventually get compliance.
Councilman Heller.
I just, you know, I've been through this with code compliance as well as trying to acquire properties, to put parcels together in the neighborhoods over the years, and if, to me, with, we already have fines in the code, and we double them if there's a, if it's a repeat offender, there might be some language in the IPMC we'd want to look at, we, I'm not aware that we're even charging the double fines very often, but I just was having a hard time figuring out if we already have found the person, because we're not making any progress until we find them. And then we've given them a list of what they need to do, we've already gotten an agreement with them through our code process of what they're going to do when, often setting out a calendar for them. If they fail to do that, I'm just still having trouble figuring out why adding another layer of bureaucracy that's still basically required what we already had, of what their name was on a list, what the property was and what they were going to do. I just, I still need some work on figuring out why that's going to help. And then to get people, the ones that are most troublesome and challenging, if you can't find them, they're, or they don't know about your law, then they're not going to have a registered agent, they're not going to respond, we stop to find them. So at which point, it seems like our system that we already have has the steps in it. But I, again, I might still be using this in something. Thank you.
Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. So I feel like we're having two different conversations here, and so perhaps you could just clarify with me. This is just for foreclosures, right?
Yes, sir.
Abandoned buildings and...
What we've talked to you about this evening, and what we met with you all individually, was three different programs. A neglected property registration, that's truly about blight neglect. A foreclosure registration, that's about foreclosure, because he will, would be, if he was contracted with the city, identifying foreclosed properties, whether they had code enforcement issues or not. But we're recommending that based on the fact that our code group struggles. It's a huge challenge to identify who the bank and the responsible party is behind a foreclosed property, because the property record remains in the name of the person that lost their home. That's our challenge. So that's neglected, foreclosed, and then vacant registry is about some public safety issues, if it catches fire in the middle of the night, does the police and fire department know how to get ahold of the owner? Is that, is vacant property something that you want to encourage and support in the community? That's kind of the question that you would ask yourself around that piece of the policy.
Okay. And forgive me, it seemed like we really took a hard shift in a different direction from where we, where I was at. With the foreclosures, you know, Councilman Heller mentioned, you know, we're adding an extra layer of bureaucracy, and it seems like we're also removing one too, in finding the owners. Isn't that what a company like ProChamps would do though, is take that off, that burden off of you guys?
Yep.
At a minimal expense, or really, in some ways, no expense to the city.
That's correct, that's what we would set out to do, replace the playing Sherlock Holmes for your staff, to put you in touch with the responsible party, when you need to, faster. That's the whole point. Right now, they spend a lot of time just trying to do research, and you can sit on 1-800 bank numbers all day long, it's not going to get you anywhere, it's not going to get the grass cut, that's what we do for you.
Right, and I, I can personally attest to that, because we did have a foreclosure about three doors down from my house.
It was your neighbor.
It sat empty for a year and a half, nobody knew who owned it, the grass was three feet tall, and we, and then it went on auction, and even after that, we still didn't know who owned it. And so, so yeah, I can, I can see this as a valuable resource. I would probably ask city manager, if we do bring this back as an action item, could we maybe split it up into different parts? Thanks.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thanks for having me.
At this point in time, this concludes our non-action items. We now move on to the announcements. City clerk?
On the September 17th agenda, we have two presentations, the housing study kickoff and the hazmat product update. We have one appointment to the Shawnee County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, we have one ordinance on the consent agenda for the Taste From the Top special event, we have two non-action items, we have a discussion on the Central Park neighborhood plan, and one on the parking of vehicles on residential property.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item, I want to go through a couple of items I covered last time, which is our Landlord Expo is at the Ramada Inn on September 14, that's this Saturday at 9:00 AM, so any landlords, individuals that are interested, that is a good event, it's our second time to conduct it. Also, a reminder that Clean Slate Day will be held a tee pack on September 20, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Last item I have is, I want to thank the governing body for their approval of two major legislative items tonight. These are items that correct years and years of code that had been not addressed, both in the personnel code and also in the sign code. So major accomplishments, also want to thank the staff that's worked on both of these particular issues, it's been a lot of meetings for both, and a very successful conclusion tonight, moving us into the new century with this information.
On my part, I would like to say congratulations to the Topeka High tennis team. If you notice, I was getting messages and I kept on looking at my phone, and I was being notified that my youngest daughter, second seed for varsity, was one undefeated. And my oldest daughter got second place, I think, in the tournament tonight, so your Trojans are really looking strong this year in tennis. Another point of pride is, I want to say thank you to the 190th Air Fuelling Wing. I was inducted this Saturday as honorary wing commander, and it was an amazing event. And as part of my honorary commander duties, I will be on base tomorrow at 7:00 in the morning for the raising of the flag for 9/11, and then they're going to have a 5K after that. That's all I have for now. Councilman Mays.
Just briefly, and I assume maybe some of you guys have gotten this email, the Washburn University College Republicans and College Democrats are coming together to have a 9/11 ceremony at noon tomorrow at Washburn, and that's in the Union, so it might be a good thing to attend if you guys get a chance.
Councilman Horne.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to invite you over to the West Side, the Spin Pizza and Johnny's Tavern are open, and the We're Coming Soon is open now at PT's Coffee, so in case you guys are looking for a cup of joe, that'll be ready too.
Councilman Leser.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to extend a congratulations to my friend Greg Swart, who was honored with the Topeka Public School Foundation Patron Award today. I was predisposed this morning, so I was unable to make it, I know that the mayor made it, I saw her photo there, but congratulations, Greg, well-deserved.
Councilman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. If I seem a little scattered sometimes, I'm, I've got a number of issues going on with my neighborhoods and in District 1, so that I've got about four meetings a week on different things that are going on right now. So it's a busy time in District 1, and the invitation I accepted last week was a lunch that I get to about once a year at the Sunshine Connection, which is in District 1 over on West 6th Street, and that is a great group of folks, it's a, it's a consumer-run program for persons with severe persistent mental illness, and it's just a great place and great people, it was good to get caught up with them. I, on first Friday, got out to the Mulvane Art Fair, or the Mulvane Museum, which has got some great exhibits going, and NOTO, included at NOTO was a sneak preview of the upcoming Aaron Douglas Art Fair, this year's art fair is on the 28th. Scott Weir is the featured artist, he's the guy that makes guitars out of cigar boxes, and he was there on the, on North Kansas Avenue on Friday night demonstrating his work. But the art fair will be fun, so make sure it's on your calendar. Also, I got to the Turning Point Event, a number of us were there, and Ruben West was back, he'd been here for the 65th anniversary of Brownby Board. We had a panel that had Jenny Torrance as Jay Hazim, and Taylor Buckley, who's doing the positive, Topeka positive.
Reviews.
Reviews on Facebook. They did a great program that included everyone in the, in the audience to just talk about where we are and how it feels, and what we need to do to keep moving forward. I didn't get to go to Serengeti Nights this year, because the Lynx had their annual event on Saturday night, it was a Motown review to raise money for scholarships, and they always put on a great event, and today, there was a groundbreaking for the Tender Loving Care Pet Nursing Hotel, that will be in the old Casa Belisa Beauty Salon at 17th and Medford across from Dairy Queen, for people who don't know where Casa Belisa was. That's going to be really exciting for, as a place for people who have ailing pets that they dearly love and do not want to give up, but for whom they cannot care, give the 24-hour care that they need, and also as a place for pets, if someone personally is no longer able to care for their pets, can board them in effect there at what will be a wonderful facility. She's hoping to be open by the, by the first of the year. Last but not least, I did go out after the, after the Turning Point Event at the invitation of Councilwoman Jensen, and the Brew Bank is open as of yesterday, and I think it's awesome, speaking of new openings in our case downtown. That's it.
Deputy Mayor. Councilwoman O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll keep it short, I'd like to congratulate the Topeka High Trojans football team. I had a chance Friday night to go out to Shawnee Heights and watch that team, and we also made... we also made SportsCenter with that play, that was just awesome. And I did forget my ketchup and mustard, but I will bring it next week. I did order a hot dog, and they did not have any ketchup and mustard, I was just very disappointed, but the game was just awesome. So, hoi hoi, mighty Troy, keep up the good work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You sure you want to respond to that?
All I'll tell you is, the reason you did not get ketchup and mustard is because I was working in the concession stand at that game.
That's even worse.
So I hope you didn't get sick.
Councilwoman, it was in your comments.
No. I, a serious note, have a big JDO meeting tomorrow night, and it looks like there's going to be an opportunity for us to approve up to maybe 500 jobs coming here to Topeka, so hopefully everyone can join us here, same time, same place. Thanks.
Councilwoman Padilla. Councilwoman Jensen.
So, the benefit of going last is I get reminded of all the cool things I've done. The penalty of going last is, half my stuff has already been talked about. The boy, as we affectionately call him, was seven months old yesterday. He has three teeth, the biggest smile I've ever seen, and we're a happy little family, so. He's a voracious eater, oh my gosh. I, too, had the pleasure of going to Turn Topeka, and it was really, really well-done, and I was so excited to see so many people that I had never, ever met at one event to talk about what a wonderful community we live in. And I will share, my table thought the most valuable resource in all of our community was its people, and I firmly believe that is true. I got to go to Serengeti Night to the zoo, that is such a well-done event. There were so many people that hadn't been to the zoo since we had opened Camp Cowabunga, and they were just wandering around in utter bewilderment at how wonderful that is, and they're excited to see the progress start on the garden. So, that's very exciting. Touch a Truck, I don't usually get to go to that event, because we're usually out of town for a family weekend. I have never seen so many children in downtown, and it was fantastic. Let me tell you, we should leave a sandbox there all the time. Those kids ate that up. I can't wait for hunters to be old enough so I can go play with the two and not get looked at badly. So, as Councilwoman Heller alluded, the Brew Bank is open. My wife and I's assistant, that is her brother's family, is part of that. So we have been there every day this week. I have eaten everything on the menu, and I will tell you, as a carnivore, I'm not generally interested in salads, and they are good enough that I will eat them, so that should be reason enough for anybody to go and try it. Have a great week, everybody.
At this point in time, we move on to the public comment. The first person to sign up to speak is Tamika Gray.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. It's my turn to speak right here. Y'all looking so seriously, and there's not the energy that we got at the Turning Point. Actually, I'm here because I'm proud to see the city taking the steps that it's needing to do to, to just be the city of character that it once was when I was a little girl. We had the world-famous Topeka Zoo. I have hopes that one day that'll come back. I have the energy, because I know we are capable of being over and beyond better than what we've apparently seen. I love the new streets that we got in our Topeka. I have walked my kids in the street to school when they were going to Quincy. I have seen elderly individuals in the street on their wheelchairs almost get run over. So St. John and the sidewalks, I stopped and had my bright yellow shirt on, they said, Tamika, this for you? I said, this is for the people. I loved hearing the young man that's, that's new here saying that the people made him feel like he was home, and that's what we want going forward, momentum 2022. I have some concerns. I went to a couple of North Topeka NIA's, there's two of them, last night in the Toma meetings. I was kind of saddened. I was almost embarrassed. There's a lot of anger about the representation that they feel they don't receive, and I just quietly told them, you know, give the city a break. You know, they're doing what they can do, but at the same time, we have to be accountable in our own neighborhoods, in our own communities. We're not going to keep helping repair if we're going to tear down the minute they turn around. That's a waste of your time, money. We all have to work together with each other. We have to do it in a polite manner. I know there's a lot of history in North Topeka, it's the first established war for the city of Topeka. I just want to know if there's talks of establishing the McKinley Elementary School. It's an ISO overnight in Western. It's one of the first elementary schools for the Exodusers. There's a lot of history over there. I know a lot of people want to see a lot of work done, as in the preservation, as in the Monroe School, which is now the historical Brown versus Board, and we're home to that. So, we need to look into that, because there's a lot of people that have pride in that area. I'm not going to belabor you too long, because it is getting late, but it's just a thing that I am concerned about in that area, and there's, is there talks of developing more, there's more street projects. I was looking at the numbers tonight for the public, the planning and the public works. Can we prioritize some of the zone, the street work to maybe fix up Tyler from Morse to Highway 24? It's horrible. It's horrible. And people are tired, there's people that ride bikes there, there's no bike lane there, there's no sidewalks, there's no curbs. I love the sewer and the street project, but it's a lot of mess over there, Ms. Claire. It's a lot of mess, and they're not happy about it.
We have one minute left.
Thank you. So, that's all I had, but mostly I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm excited going forward, and have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Second person to sign up to speak, and I don't see her here, is Ms. Carol Marple.
She's, she's not going to be here tonight.
Okay, and then that brings us up to you, Mr. Trammell.
I respect you. I had...
All right, thank you very much. Now, there is no executive session happening this evening, and thank you, everybody, for being a team player and not needing the break tonight, which means that at this point in time, we're adjourned.